Good evening, everyone. Good evening, good evening, good evening. Good evening. We're gonna start our planning board meeting at 6:00 PM and today is Tuesday, November fourteenth. Can I get a, I guess, a in a sense?
Folks, the screening is beginning.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you can. We're beginning our meeting. Okay, I'm gonna get a roll call. Just everybody raise their hand, say who they are. You start with Ben.
Ben Hornet.
Bettina Young.
John Cody.
Teresa Joyner.
Brian DeWort.
And this is Victoria and Ryan, lawyer consultant. Okay, can I get a motion to open the meeting?
The move.
Okay, so we have a, an error. To, an error. We left off one application and we're gonna make a slight change on the others. We're gonna start off with seven thirty-five that we mistakenly left off the agenda. But they're not here. They did ask to come in December, so we still had to put them on because they're in the public hearing. And then we wanna make a change to place new business right after public hearing and then place old business as the last thing we do. Okay? Do I have to get a motion for that?
I mean, we don't, we don't follow Robert's rules here, so if board members don't object, you just hold you.
Do you guys object to that?
No. No.
Okay, good. Okay, can I get a motion to open up the public hearing for seven thirty-five Columbus Street?
How many more?
All right, they're not here. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, they're not here today. They asked to be on December planning board and that's where we're going to. Oh, any member of the public wants to say anything about four oh, uh, seven thirty-five Columbus Street? Anyone? Okay. So we're going to, can I get a motion to continue this for next month?
I make a motion for you to continue, don't you? For seven thirty-five, correct?
Yes.
To put it on the docket for next month.
A second.
And the date is December
Okay, with favor? Any opposed? Okay. Now, can I get a motion to open up the public hearing for four oh two dash four six Warren Street?
I'll make the motion. One second.
Then you get it, sorry. All in favor? All right, okay. Is anyone here for four oh two four six Warren Street? Okay, Linda, Linda is with us.
Yeah, I'm here. Hi, everyone. Charlie Gottlieb here for Galvin Initiatives Foundation. Excuse me. Just to recap, we had to submit an amended site plan application for this proposed hotel and commercial restaurant space after receiving HPC approval. The changes are mainly architectural. They are also related to removing a new story over the existing building and a reduction of two hotel rooms and a reduction of approximately nine hundred and ten square feet of commercial restaurant space. So it's an overall reduction in the project as well as changes to the elevations, which have been approved by the HPC, but what were different than your original approval. In addition to the site plan amendment, we also needed to renew our subdivision approval for the lot merger so that we could get that signed by the chairperson.
Well, was this, this was a forty-room hotel, right? Was it forty? Okay, was it a forty going to thirty-nine, I mean thirty-eight, or was it a thirty going to twenty-nine?
Nope, it was a, excuse me, let me pull it up here quickly. It was a thirty-two-room hotel going to a thirty-room hotel.
Okay. Anybody in the board has any questions, right?
Yes.
No.
Okay, this was an application that's already been approved. They went to the historic, right?
They went to the historic board and as Charlie explained, the historic board had a lot of comments on the architectural features. So to accommodate the historic board's comments, it ended up getting reduced by one level. So the footprint is essentially the same.
Yes.
So what you reviewed as far as layout, doors, footprint, that's essentially the same. But some of the materials changed and the visual from the road changed.
Okay, did we get anything about him when you went into subdivision?
So Charlie and I talked about it. I did put it in the resolution that we would renew it as part of this project. And then at the last meeting, the board determined that because it was a reduction in height and a reduction in square footage, it was consistent with the board's prior environmental review that it wouldn't have any more impact.
So did we want to, um, okay, is there any public comments on the four two four oh four oh two four six Warren Street Hotel on the corner of Warren and Board? Anybody have comments? Anyone out here have comments? Any hand raised? Okay. Board members?
I just have one last question. Victoria, I don't know if you saw an email I sent about ten minutes ago. I just wanna make sure the dates line up on the drawings.
Yeah, I had August tenth and you had August twenty-eighth on the drawings, so we will, I will make that, I will check the date and make that correction if I got that wrong.
Okay, thank you.
So now we have a little motion to approve?
So I had drafted a resolution which I sent around to the board members and I will read the resolved part. So now therefore be resolved that the planning board grants subdivision approval to the project and authorizes the chair or her authorized attorney to sign a final subdivision plot substantially consistent with sub one, which is the one in the plans, after compliance with the following conditions. One, approval of a deed merging the three lots by the attorney to the planning board. And two, revision of sheet sub one to include a zoning table, owner signature block, and planning board approval block. Those are just technical corrections. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby grants amended site plan approval to the project as depicted on the amended site plan set and authorizes the chair or her authorized attorney to sign the amended site plan set after compliance with the following conditions. One, evidence of payment of all these escrow. Two, approval of a sewer extension by the Department of Environmental Conservation in compliance with six NYCRR Part fifty. Three, proof of filing of the improved subdivision plot to merge the lots. And four, proof of accreditation of the merger deed. And then be it further resolved that prior to the code enforcement officer authorizing issuance of a building permit, applicant shall provide the planning board with a key app of the third signing site plan for the city's record.
Any questions to this resolution? So can I get a motion to accept this resolution for four oh two four six Warren? Second? Second, Bettina?
I'm refusing myself on this because I live in a government property.
All in favor? All right.
Four zero.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay, so this resolution will be signed and sent off to the applicant. I'm used to the city first and then send off to the applicant. Okay, the next we have one.
Thank you.
Six twelve, that's an avenue. Is there anyone here for that in the public hearing?
I think they also like. They have to be continued to December.
Okay, so can I get a motion to continue it until December?
Like a motion?
Second. Right, all in favor? Now we're gonna go to new business, okay?
Do I have a motion on that?
No. Okay, now we're going to fifty-nine North Front Street. Are you here this evening to make the presentation? Great. You can come over here.
Do you have the ability to connect to a projector?
Yes.
Hi. Good evening, everyone.
I'm Nora.
I'm Caleb. We're from CLA partnership working with Kitesnest on fifty-nine North Front Street. This is a project that has been in the works for a while now. Some of you may have become familiar with it in the last presentation we made about a year ago, at which point the project looked very different than where it is now. So we're sort of restarting the application with a an updated building scheme. The site approach remains fairly similar to what we looked at last time, but we'll start from the, from the beginning here. And please stop if there's any questions and also if if, you know, we're having to stop at any point and just start doing the Q and A as well.
Yeah, and I'm David. I'm the owner of the project. Before you begin, do we wish to have this projected for folks who are online as well?
I think you should share it.
Yes.
So we'll just need you to log on to the Zoom meeting from here and then share it. I'll drag you to where. Okay, yeah, so agent in the best. And that is. And that is engine two seven nine.
It's all in case, yeah.
What's the name?
I have this. So might, uh.
I think just more Navy service. Yeah, I have the other one open anyway, but let's do that.
You have to go to the link in the email. That's fine. It's not an attachment. It's a link in the email.
Great, okay, we're ready.
Okay, so this is the intro page here, just introducing the project. This was part of the application materials that we submitted. The site that we're asking for a development approval for, review for, is at fifty-nine North Front Street, which is across the street from fifty-eight North Front Street, which is also owned by Kitesnest and currently is the site on which their teaching greenhouse facility is operating. Some of you may know this site as a community garden program for Kitesnest and the the existing, there's an existing foundation on the site, which is a foundation for an older building that burned down over ten years ago now, I think, at this point. So let's just move quickly and give you an overview of the existing site conditions. For reference, so this is the Hudson River. Top of the page here, we're looking west. North Front Street is towards us and the site fifty-nine North Front Street is delineated in the yellow. The community garden is here where I'm putting my mouse. The existing foundation that I mentioned is towards the southern side of the site here. This is looking from the Hudson back towards North Front Street. And you see across North Front Street, fifty-eight North Front Street, where the Kitesnest Greenhouse Facility is, where my mouse is hovering into the left is the Fergery. This is looking from North Front Street northward. The Hudson River is on the left, as is our site, and to the right is fifty-eight North Front Street. So what we're looking at here, this is an axonometric bird's eye view of of the site, showing the proposed building, which is overlapping what the kind of footprint of that existing foundation. It is located, the ground floor of that building is located at eighteen feet above the mean high tide level. So we are out of the floodplain, although the site does have, the northern portion of the site is in the, in the floodplain. We are showing vehicular access to the site via more or less in the same location as the current kind of driveway that serviced the previous building that was on the site. And along North Front Street areas for drop-off, a bus stop and pedestrian access on the, on the north side of the site and as well as from those site arrival points via bus or, or by car. Beyond the building, the Kitesnest has been really intent on completely transforming this site and turning these two parcels into a kind of learning campus for their for their facility. So the improvements go well beyond the bounds of the building. We're, well, Nora and I are architects, so we're sort of focused on that aspect of the site improvements. But there's a lot of attention being paid to providing accessible routes throughout the site. Where the landscape team that we've been working with has carved out an amphitheater here that's adjacent to the, to the indoor kind of gathering space of the building and it sort of spills out on the site, kind of activating that whole lower section to the, to the north, next to the community garden, which will remain intact, but be sort of reconstituted. We are, let's see. Where should we go from here? Maybe, maybe you could tell us, this is, this is the sort of overview. We can jump into the building and look at some of the space's interiors, the building. We can look at step diagrams. How would you how would you like to proceed?
Quick question on the outside. Is, you said part of it's in a flood zone?
Part of the site.
Part of the site?
Yeah, exactly.
Do you need to take on any mitigation for that? Or is it part enough away from where people will be occupying the space?
It's definitely out of the footprint of the building, but we definitely are mindful of it in terms of in terms of the site drainage, making sure that, you know, we're not, that we're daylighting it once they're, you know, mindful of where that flood elevation is. And we are also locating, so the, the building is essentially a mostly a one-story building with a two-story office space in this kind of center pavilion. Under the ground floor is a crawl space for mechanical and plumbing routing. So all of that stuff is up above the flood elevation. The slab of that, of that crawl space is at elevation twelve, which is the flood plain. So we're, we're up above that.
When we were there, we saw a slab. That's, you said that's gonna remain.
It's gonna remain. We're gonna build up above that. So that existing elevation of the slab is at ten. We're gonna be up at so we're not gonna demo it if we don't have to. But we are gonna build above that.
Yeah. Uh, other question, just quick. I'm not sure if you're gonna answer this, but the compost zone, would that be accessible to all members of the Hudson community? Like if you compost at your own home, could you bring it there?
The signup program, you can contact Kitesnest or we believe it serves families who sign up for it.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yeah.
What's the occupancy of that building? In terms of people?
In terms of people, I believe we are at one
sixty-eight.
Are you gonna keep the existing community gardens except for the
Yes.
Yeah, we're not gonna redo it.
Yeah, the plan is to not disturb that portion of the site. The limited work line is really where the pathways are. I'll point that out, but the community guards will mostly be there. We're gonna refurbish them as part of the project, but not change use of the area.
So that just basically covers the footprint of the
Yeah, exactly. A little twisted on.
Uh, where is your parking gonna be for this building across the street? Remember, we had talked about that when we
Yeah, we have sort of a parkapalago. So just to quickly touch base on what David had mentioned there, this is the sort of more abstract, two-dimensional view. This is the footprint of the building and then these lines here are just the registrations of that whole foundational wall, just for reference to understand how it sort of sits on, on there. The parking, let's just skip ahead to the parking diagram. So again, we're, we're looking at fifty-nine North Front Street is our site, fifty-eight North Front Street. To the east across North Front Street is also owned by Kitesnest. In determining a parking strategy where, you know, Kitesnest has spent a lot of time evaluating what their current needs are and then how those needs will evolve with this
Okay.
with this project. We are, given the, you know, the scale of your project, we are thinking of all sorts of ways to include parking. What we are showing in this diagram is a combination of parking areas that are, that are accessible adjacent to the site. So North Front Street, or excuse me, Dock Street, as it extends between the site and the Fergery to the north. The, we have some parking that would be available in the drop-off zone that we were looking at in the axon, along the, sort of between where the pavement ends and the, and the property line begins. And then we're showing this, this sort of refurbished drive that is currently existing from the previous building as accommodating two spots and then traffic pickup, emergency vehicle access, et cetera, through that means. So all, all totaled up, we are at, do you have that number off the top of your head? We are at total of sixteen parking spots on the eastern parcel and fifteen on the on the fifty-nine North Front Street. So a total of twenty-nine spots through those combination, those combined strategies.
Would you grant, would, would you place an easement on fifty-eight so that fifty-nine, the building on fifty-nine would always have some parking that are a proposal?
That's not part of our proposal as it is right now. Yeah. I think we're waiting to hear what y'all think.
So would that create more parking?
No, it wouldn't create more parking, but I, I mean, there's not a parking requirement in the city. But if you create a building and they say the parking for it is across the street, the question is, you know, if the building's ever sold, should it go, should the parking across the street go with that building or is it not necessary?
I'd say just in terms of programming for this building, the majority is also not driving. There are kids getting dropped off or walking from adjacent neighborhoods. It's, it's really a building in service of folks in that immediate vicinity.
More convenience minded.
Yeah, we did an extensive kind of internal parking needs assessment for staff and folks are coming out and the kind of peak number of cars on any day is like between fifteen and twenty. That's, that's who comes around. So it's
It's gonna change though.
That, that's what the new program increase actually. We looked at it, given the bigger expanded staff. Right now, there's four cars.
And you gave us all that information.
I think, I think so, yeah.
You may have to ask. Now, I just wanna make it clear. I mean, what exactly is the purpose of the building? You said it was an educational center?
Um, yeah.
And then you said something about a theater, some type of
Yeah, so we need
Because it's gonna be nonprofit and it's for an education center. And some type of a theater.
Which showers, why isn't it
Yeah, which, yeah, I mean,
Explain to me.
What exactly is all that?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think it's hard for anyone to describe Kitesnest in one sentence because they are such an incredible resource to the community because they do so much. So they, they provide after-school programming, they have the community garden, there's the compost, there's the, you know, performance classes. So in a way, it's a very good question. What is this doing?
Cause I read and I'm like, what exactly is Cause I read and I'm like, what exactly is so?
Yeah, so it is an educational facility, it will have.
For everyone in the community.
For open to the community. Uh, you can ask Kites Nest for how the registration works.
The private hall.
It is a nonprofit organization.
Is it is it a school?
Okay, if I jump in?
If you say who you are.
Yeah, I'm the executive director and co-founder of Kites Nest and my colleagues who run the order, they stand here with me as well. But this is very, very.
Okay.
Kites Nest is a nonprofit educational center for youth. Um, we mostly serve. Uh, youth in Hudson, who are growing up in Hudson and in the neighboring towns. Um, ninety-five percent of our programming is completely free and the remaining little bit, we have one program that's. That part of the sliding scale, we all the way down the. So our programs are extremely accessible, they always have been, they always will be. And they're intended to serve all ages. Um, and even with the expanding space that we'll have in this facility, we'll be able to serve more families and adults as well through the community. Programming, intergenerational programming. But really the intention is an out-of-school, we are not a private school. We mostly run programs after school, summer, weekends, school breaks. And a couple of programs for homeschool programs, which I mentioned, are the only sliding scale paid program, everything else is free, we're also the largest employer of youth. In Columbia County, so we train, we employ and train young people and um, how to. Work as educators, artists, um, and gardeners, they run the community garden, they run the greenhouse, they run the compost operation, they run the after-school programs. And we also support them in in leadership development so that they can go on to be into this in the leadership in our communities, and they already have.
So all the programs being held at. At the facility will be sponsored by Kites Nest, that organization. It like a private or outside company can't say, well, I want to use your space.
They can, thank you for asking that question, yeah, we'll be, we will. With the expanded facility, we'll be able to offer space to other community organizations that don't have these kind of facilities. Because it's out of reach, or small, and you're in every shop, you have a cat or two, a commercial kitchen, a performance space.
You're gonna have a commercial.
Yes. Uh, so.
It's mission aligned, though, it's not like.
Yeah, there would be other nonprofits who are interested in doing some of the same types of things, but they have their own projects. And so we would offer facilities to other nonprofits and we've been over the last couple of years in conversation with all of. The many partner organizations in the community, asking them about what they need and what kind of space they would want. And so their input, they've been part of the the design process, they've come to focus groups. But their input is is completely integrated into the design of the building.
And how many are, also this theater, the theater, you mentioned the name of the.
Yeah, Tuna Tuna is Walker's.
What was the name of it again?
Yeah, so, yeah, why don't we, maybe another way of of explaining the.
Yeah, cause I mean, just wanna know.
Inexplicable, this is just talk, yeah, talk through the. The spaces themselves, so let's just start at this drawing that we've seen and then we won't even get into the building for a little bit, so. Teresa, just to touch on the amphitheater, the amphitheater is it's an outdoor, basically a an outdoor. The the grid of the site slopes up and so it's making use of that site for seating. We're actually recycling the old foundation that is onsite and using those pieces to kind of retain the soil and create seating for. A little, a stage, um, that kind of outdoor performance.
Does not need outdoor.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, so those are sort of step areas in the landscape, that is the kind of what we're calling the amphitheater.
It doesn't have. Like re sound reinforcement infrastructure, it's really about kind of public gathering circular space.
And.
After, right?
Not, there's nothing, there's, yeah.
It's gonna be the outdoor.
To navigate the spot, but not.
And what time of, well, we know it's only gonna be for the summertime because too cold. But what time of night or day would this take place? I'm thinking at night, right? See it better?
Well, the amphitheater is more like a venue, so it could be used during a workshop or a class as part of their.
But it's still outside.
Yeah, it's an outdoor space, but it could be used for any kind of musical performance, because a lot of our programs are arts integrated and so you can produce a music or performance.
So that means sound. That's gonna take encumbered sound in the area. Like you have those, um, the, um, houses, the, um. Sound house of excellent. Not really, not when it comes to sound.
Yeah, so the the amphitheater is on this side of the building, so the building is between. The amphitheater and the terrace.
Right.
But it's true that most of our programs take place before six P M, so I imagine that. Uh, sound, you know, we're not imagining, this is not like a night venue.
It won't be as loud as the as the anthrax trains.
Yeah.
Well, people are used to that. It provides transportation back and forth as they call it.
And your lighting, your exterior lighting is?
Yeah, we have a diagram that. We can jump to that, maybe we just go to the building first and just and then return to the. To the landscape, so we're looking actually from. From south is page down, north is page up, so the amphitheater that we were just discussing was here. Is is here. In this area. Just for reference. So, uh, the main, uh, the end, the building is very porous, there's there's many ways of accessing the building from the site. Um, we have been. Talking about this door here on the facing the cell side, so addressing the. The apartment buildings up the street and the city of Hudson as being the front door, so we're very intentionally kind of rotating the building relative to the street to make that a welcoming entry point.
Okay, so you took those veins in the facility when you said that's that's what we're looking for, businesses with the community in mind.
Exactly, and North Front Street is the the this, where I'm driving my house here, is the street here, so we're rotating that entry relative to that. So if you're walking down the hill from. Downtown Hudson, from that portion of the city, you would enter the building here into a welcome space. Um, that is bookended on the right by the. We're referring to it more as a community kitchen, it's a it's sort of a classroom kitchen, a demonstration kitchen, community kitchen. It will be, you know, support commercial kitchen activity, but it is not like a restaurant, it is a, you know, it's a program kitchen that is. One component of many that constitute Kites Nest programming. So across the welcome area from the the kitchen is the gathering space, which is really centered to the building, it is. Literally right in the middle of the building, it looks out over the amphitheater, looks out over the Fergery and the Hudson River. Um, and that will be a kind of primary program space, primary gathering space of when. There are individual classrooms happening, you know, from say nine A M to lunchtime. Those classrooms might come together in the gathering space and all have a meal together or share. Um, some of their impressions from the morning, et cetera, meet as a as a full group, so we've scaled that room very intentionally with. A group of forty people gathering in the circle, which is kind of a core component of the way that. Classroom. Contingents come together. Uh, behind the gathering space is most of the kind of infrastructure of the building, so you have a laundry room. You were, someone was asking about the shower, so we'll touch on that. The the laundry is a is to support the. Obviously, there's a lot of laundry generated by things like compost and things like a kitchen, right, like all the aprons need to get washed, right? It's also like a place where if somebody's, you know, washing sheer bricks or they can't afford to do laundry. That's a place where they can.
That would be great.
Kites Nest permission and use that facility, so it's being. Yeah, I don't I don't wanna speak for for Kites Nest, but it's very much intended to be a community resource.
Is, I'm sorry, is the building all electric?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, so we have a laundry room, we have a administrative office here, which is located right next to the either the. Southern main entry or the northern main entry, so that there's. There will be people at Kites Nest who are there to receive, you know, visitors, parents, kids. There's a, you know, a a strong desire to sort of understand using the building and, you know, have it be very accessible and open, but also. Um, to have, you know, some. Uh, orientation as part of of the the entry sequence. Across the hallway from the office area is a stair up to the administrative offices, which we'll get to in the next slide. Then we have an accessible bathroom and a shower. Um, again, if you're you've been working in the garden all day. And you are scheduled to participate in a community cooking event. You might wanna take a shower, so that it's that kind of thing that that that's intended for.
So is that one shower you're gonna have?
One shower.
Just one shower?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, that explains it, I thought it was showers.
No, it's not a, yeah, um, then we have another. Gender-neutral toilet, so we cross from that. Um, so the other end of the gathering space is, we're referring to that as the classroom gallery, so that's a a space to. For Kites Nest to display all of the making that happens in their space, so artworks, sculpture. Um, you know, community action events, you know, like really like telling. The story of what they're doing and having the individual programs have a sense of the whole and what's happening in. Um, in programs that they aren't necessarily participating in. Um, but that's that classroom gallery is really intended to be kind of part of the welcome area, so all these spaces sort of flow together. Um, and then the gathering space is also kind of becomes part of that. Adjacent to the classroom gallery is a media lab for producing podcasts, teaching, you know. Digital recording techniques, um. Recording, uh, you know, an album.
Oh, the recordings.
Yeah, uh, and next to the media room is the is the what we're referring to as the cozy classroom, which is a kind of smaller, more intimate. Classroom space that that adjacency to the media room holds the promise that the cozy room could be a kind of. Almost like a, you know, sound booth and then, you know, like the drum kit goes in the cozy classroom and then the recording in the media room. Um, and then final, finally to the left here is the design studio, which is has a double-height space with a skylight above which. Get a sense from the outside of the building, those moments of letting light down the building. Um, and that's the kind of core art-making. Space, uh, you know, hand tools for, you know, wood woodworking, et cetera, and. Each of these spaces sort of has a relationship with the site too, so they have the space of the. Inside the building and then, you know, these sliding doors that that open out to a kind of. Uh, planted area overlooking the river, so it's a way to expand the program space in the in the shoulder seasons in the summer, if it's not too hot. Um, again, the classroom gallery flows out, the gathering space and the kitchen has a service counter here. Facing the north and then also facing the welcome area, so, you know, in the. In the middle of the winter, you can come in and get some, you know, hot cider in the in the summer, you know, that. People could be serving ice cream. And again, it's not like a restaurant facility, it's people at Kites Nest, you know. Engaging with one another through that that kitchen space.
I I have a question, I don't wanna be let link it, but if this is not a a private school, which I think your last iteration had classroom space and teaching spaces, it's very different. Um, can you explain how this fits into what's allowed by the zoning law, what what use is this? And how is this permitted? How does the planning board classify this?
Yeah, this is something that we went through in great detail with with Craig in the in the in our first iteration, so. It's a nonprofit as opposed to an accredited school, so I'm not an expert in the school accreditation, but it is a different. Type of entity, alimocenary, I believe, perhaps, hopefully I'm pronouncing that correctly, is the technical term zoning. That pertains to the, you know, this is a nonprofit educational organization.
Yeah, you don't have to answer it right now, but it would be helpful if you could give me your written narrative explaining how this fits within the permitted use for the district.
Yes.
On page two of the form of the application, question number five.
Um, the submission from eleven-nine?
Correct, so it's per R G permitted use. Uh, four, and then you follow R two district, three two five eight A. One, R one district, and then three two seven seven A.
And then it's the, but then it says public school and private school, so I guess. You you said it weren't a private school, so I I think you need to reconsider that you're not. Considered a private school, um, or tell me how you, tell me how you fit under those two categories.
Yeah, noted, we'll 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 definitely round out that that detail.
Add that in the, you know, I mean, comprehensive plan, that location was cited as a job training and educational center with the intended. Intended use before they tore down the building. And so. I understand the the code, the zoning code is what they, but this has long been the intended purpose of the state.
Well, we do, we do have our consultants. Take on this. Ryan, you wanna go over this with us?
Did we send it to them?
No, sure, no, I didn't.
Oh.
Ryan, you wanna?
Yeah, I'm happy to go through the comments or where else. Is that without?
Well, I do that one more question, I guess I really access. Okay, um, you said how about, what what, um, the number of jobs and what type of jobs are we talking about?
For the staffs of the.
Yes, and would it it it'll be hiring from local people, from the people in the area, okay, so. How many jobs are we talking about?
For for the to for adults or for youth?
Both.
So we currently employ between twenty-five and thirty units at any given time, I would imagine potentially doubling that.
And you this were from what, from fourteen?
Fourteen to twenty.
So you have a like a summer program also?
Summer and after-school.
Okay.
I would have to check the the projected numbers to get the exact.
Okay, you can send it.
But, yeah, but it would be, uh, we'd be supporting, you know, dozens of of. Jobs, adult jobs. And all of our jobs are competitive salaries.
Good.
Full benefits, four O one Ks, health insurance. And a lot of our staff are from the local community. Um, and our plan is that by the time we're in there, we're we're already starting to hire alumni from our programs into our staff. So young people grow up in the in the programs in the community, there's a pathway for from age fourteen all the way up. To eventually have a full-time salary position in meaningful work. So they're, you know, the jobs are mostly in the educational sector, but also in administration, fundraising, maintenance, gardening. Um, communications.
Will we be able to get that information that you guys apply to? Okay, okay, now we'll go get Ryan to. Go over his report.
All right, thank you, Teresa. Um, so we provided, uh, provided a round of comments on this initial submission. Um, so, starting off, we do have a comment in there regarding, you know, the project is located in the Riverfront Gately District. Um, as the material was presented, uh, we did review this as a private, not-for-profit. Uh, school or educational facility, which is permitted in that district, but, you know, obviously, we're we're having additional discussion about that now. Moving on to seeker and environmental review related items, uh, the project does appear to be an unlisted action under seeker. Um, and the applicant has submitted a short environmental assessment form. Um, it is up to the planning board whether you conduct a coordinated review. Um, and we can, we can discuss that additionally, it never hurts to conduct a coordinated review, so. Um, you know, that's always the the probably best way to go if there's any question. The E A F submitted has been, uh, it's an out-of-date version, so just to make sure that the most up-to-date environmental assessment form is used on future submissions. That the most up-to-date, uh, environmental assessment form is used on future submissions.
We're gonna send you this.
Yeah, and, and Dave, I did send it along to David, so he can make sure that that gets over and, um. You know, if there's any questions on it after that, we'd be more than happy to, uh, discuss. Uh, the project does appear to be within five hundred feet of the city and county boundary on the west. Um, which would trigger a referral to the county planning board under two thirty-nine M. Um, and so that just should be reflected on the EAF. Uh, and question eight on the EAF, uh, discusses impacted traffic. Um, DEC, uh, guidance from the DEC defines a sustainable increase in traffic as anything over a hundred vehicles. Uh, or a hundred peak hour vehicle trips, I should specify. So with. With this, if you can provide some numbers on what your anticipated peak hour is, I think your student capacity is, um. Just shy of a hundred and fifty. Um, so if, if you can provide some backup numbers there on, on what your anticipated. The time, um, and, and what your peak vehicle trip rate would be.
And that's per hour or per day?
Uh, the hundred is, uh, peak hour.
In the, in the single peak hour, it, it'll be very less than that.
Okay. Um, but yeah, if you can just provide some backup, then we'll, you know, that at least advises the board during the seeker review. Um, the, uh, we recommend due to, uh, the site being, uh, listed or, uh, as in a check zone for cultural resources. You can coordinate with this, uh, shipboat to get a, a consultation letter and a letter of no effect on that. I believe we're in a. Archaeologically sensitive area and it does list a, uh. Come up for a listed resource, um, but I do not believe there are listed resources on the site proper. Um, but just to submit that, uh, consultation through the shipboat's PRIS system. We are in a buffer area for DEC regulated, uh, wetlands. Has any site work been done? Um, when we were out there in February, uh, nobody was, we weren't looking for wetlands, so I, I. To be honest, not, I haven't walked every square foot of the grounds. Has any, are there any suspect areas or? Um, that we think we're potentially within a hundred feet of a state-regulated wetland?
As far as we, uh, discovered through, yeah.
Okay.
Through the.
Yeah.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay. Um, so will, really anything within a hundred foot of a DEC wetland would need to, would be a regulated activity. So even if it's on the opposite side of Dock Street, um, you know, that, uh, northwest corner potentially, um. We can take, if you guys can take a, another look at that to see if, uh, we appear to be within a hundred foot adjacent area. Also flagged for a number.
So is that the lot, the building limit or the lot line? How, where are we measuring from and to?
So the regulated area is a hundred foot from a delineated state jurisdiction wetland. So any disturbance.
The disturbance of.
The disturbance, uh, within that area.
Yeah.
Um, the site does flag for potential habitat for a number of threatened or endangered species. Those are, um, you know, uh, large polygon buffer figures, um. But if, uh, if you can coordinate with the DEC and, uh. On, on, on those, uh, species and whether any potential impacts may occur. Any tree clearing? Uh, I don't believe there's any tree clearing going on on the site, correct? Okay.
A little bit of scrub.
Yeah. Um, as, as the team mentioned, um, the site is within a hundred year floodplain. Um, so the project should comply with chapter one forty-eight of the city code in a floodplain development permit will be required. Um, so even if the, even if the main building is outside of that floodplain. Um, you know, any of the work that's taking place within the floodplain will trigger the use of that floodplain development code. Um, and the environmental, uh, assessment mapper did come back with a hit for either onsite or an adjoining pot. Property, um, formal remediation. So there was no information provided in the package though on that. Uh, if you can query the, uh, remediation database through DEC to see if we can. You know, figure out where that is and, you know, very well could be, um, something kitty corner at the wastewater treatment plant. You know, it's still, it's been cleaned up or who knows? Um, but if you can, uh, dig into that a bit more, uh, to define that, that would be great.
Try to send back word. Project is loads of fill and no dig really? I mean, does that matter or is it?
It really, so this very well could be no concern at all.
Okay.
Um, it, it might not be on the site, so with the environmental assessment form, it's always looking at the site or an adjoining property.
Okay.
So this could be, could be offsite. Um, if there is any, uh, information on the, the site proper, then we. You know, probably want to look into what that means. Um, with the building design, what type of vapor barriers or recovery systems may be needed. Um, has any, has any, uh, is there any knowledge of, uh, so that slab is there? When this site was purchased, was a environmental site assessment completed or is there any?
The geotech.
Okay.
Yeah, so we can send you that report. And then there was soil testing done.
Yeah, I think the, the, the D C flag had to do with previous uses of, of, of that whole, you know, collection of sites. So we'll, we'll look into that, that.
And just to see what flagged, of course, you know, during site development, if you run into anything. You're gonna have to deal with it there through, you know, uh, the prevailing regulations, but just want to kind of. As I said, it could be an adjacent parcel and be a non-issue, um, but for, you know, the, the board to consider under seeker and just make sure. You know, we're not missing something that is right in front of us. Uh, moving on to some plan comments, uh, so there are a number of improvements proposed in the city right of way. Um, so all of those improvements, mainly the parking sidewalks, et cetera, um, should comply with city DPW standards. Um, so, you know, the parking, um, should be paved, uh, asphalt as opposed to decomposed granite or. Aggregate material, um, and then of course, everything should meet ADA standards, which, uh, you've incorporated into your plans anyways.
Uh, can you just, uh, Brian, the city right of way, the, the, the city DPW, what was the?
Standards for sidewalks and, and paving, um, curbing if any is proposed and. So all of that within the right of way will need to be, um, have a highway work permit through, through DPW, so, um. Just making sure that that's coordinated with them and they're happy because it's, you know, it's going to be an offsite improvement for you all. Uh, but then it will be, uh, within the public realm. The vehicle turnaround, um, that's proposed with the ADA, uh, parking space. It appears that, um, there, really just want to confirm that a vehicle will be able to turn around if that ADA space is occupied. Um, also, uh, you know, looking at, uh, it, it does appear there's two parking spaces. So they're both EV spaces and one to ADA, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so if those spaces are occupied, just making sure that somebody is going to be able to safely maneuver in there, um, with the, with the, uh. The dumpsters as well. Couple, you know, minor plan comments, nothing that we need to go through necessarily here, some very kind of. You know, more on the technical side, uh. And then kind of rounding out to the last item, which I'll, I'll provide in, you know, a large summary we can discuss. In as much detail as you like. So the utilities narrative, narrative, which I think was, um. Probably from the original, original submission, um, if to take. I think that's from last, yeah, last October. Um, so the occupancy numbers there are slightly different than what's presented on the site plans. We'll want to get that updated with anticipated wastewater flows, um, for the, for anticipated occupancy. Did have a question about the showers, which you've clarified, you know, it sounds like they're going to be an emergency shower on an as-needed basis, but this is not something that. I think we need to add to the wastewater calculations, um, given the high occupancy and only having one shower. Um. The utilities narrative does discuss having a grease trap, but none is shown on the plan. So for the commercial, or for the kitchen, for food preparation. Um, city sewer ordinance, sewer use ordinance does require grease oil interceptors. So we want to make sure that's on there properly sized, having. Uh, operation and maintenance protocols, uh, noted there on, on what the clean, recommended cleanout rate is. Um, and with these revisit, with the revisions and anticipated, uh, the, the occupancy. Occupancy is stated on the plans. It does appear, um, and in consultation with the DEC. That this project will be over twenty-five hundred gallons per day for an anticipated, uh, sewer demand. And which will trigger the need for a sewer extension. Um, so that, uh, the sewer extension process, essentially the applicant is to prepare as engineering report. Basically outlining your anticipated wastewater flows, um, and the existing infrastructure, what's proposed. Um, it should follow, uh, ten state standards, uh, and include all those portions in the report. Um, and then separate from that, um, the city is a combined sewer system. Um, and every, every area that's sewn by the city is tributary to at least one combined sewer overflow. As part of the city's, uh, speedies permit to operate the wastewater treatment plant, they do require a CSO assessment. For any project upstream of a CSO. Um, so. This is something that the city's been dealing with, with the, uh, DEC DPW, city DPW is currently working with DEC. To really nail down what that assessment looks like, what I would encourage you to do. Uh, there's nothing really preventing the engineering report, um, you know, this isn't a major. Major sewer infrastructure project, obviously, so the engineering report is, is fairly straightforward. The CSO assessment, however, um, as I said, uh, city DPW is working with DEC to, um, kind of put some guidelines on that. At which time you will be advised as well as the many other applicants going through the process. Um, but that will need to, uh, receive DEC, uh, approval before. Um, standard very close can be added to the system.
I think that might be worth clarifying that the, the total occupancy of a hundred and sixty-eight or whatever it is. Very rare that will be defined at that level. That's not the daily, that's the max for like a big event. And on a daily basis is far, far, far lower than that in terms of how many workers at a time. We'll, we'll obviously do the calculations, but in case that was, the number of people had a mind or who was there every day, that's.
Yeah, I was just, uh, and I think that, that we, the civil narrative we included has to fall under twenty-five hundred.
Yeah, so with the, with the revised occupancy, so two items, um, so the, the utilities narrative. Assumes a hundred and fifty students and sixteen office workers. So the plans show a hundred and forty-eight students and nineteen. Admin staff. Um, so I think what the unit loading rate works out to is I think per student, it's ten. Um, ten gallons per day per student, but then five gallons per day additional for each meal served in the utilities narrative. It consumed one meal, um, and then it's fifteen gallons per day for, for office workers. Um, that doesn't, and those numbers do not include, there's an add-on for showers, but, so those do not include. So we're looking at fifteen gallons per day per, uh, student or office worker in that, but that's just over twenty-five hundred. It is a question I reached out to the city's, uh, contact at the, in the Division of Water at DEC. And, um, I'd be happy to share that, that correspondence, um, but the response was. It's being that we're hovering right on twenty-five hundred gallons per day is, his, uh, response was that a sewer extension would be needed. Definitely occupancy wise. I mean, this is not something where. You know, it's always, it's kind of like with the shower, there's got to be a reasonable miss of, this is not something where you've got a hundred and. A hundred and fifty students showering every day. So, you know, we don't need to, we don't need to include that, but. Um, you know, your occupancy, what's, what's allowed, you know, what's going to be permitted under code, what you anticipate. Um, and if that changes that, we can definitely go back and say to the EC, does this change anything? Now, the one thing that I would caution, that changes the sewer extension process only. The CSO assessment, if you have. If you have ten students, the CSO assessment is for any new sewage, um. Discharge to the system upstream of the CSO in the city Hudson. But definitely, um, David, you have the, the comment letter, um, review and, uh, you know, more than happy to discuss that in this.
We would love that correspondence.
Yeah.
DPW as well.
Okay, yes.
And we, the planning board has posted a memo about this status of the sewer issue. It's on the city website, um, somewhere, but it, you know, just to reiterate that. You know, at this point, you proceed at your own risk. Uh, there won't be able to be an approval of the project until DEC and the city are able to work out. The guidelines for how to approve projects in the CSO. So that's underway, but it will take some time.
Okay. Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Victoria. Um, I just have one more question. When we came to the site. You had mentioned about the sidewalk going towards the river. Um, on, uh, what street is that? That, um, what street is that? Downstreet? Yeah. Are you still, is that, was that in the plan?
I think you were talking about front, the sidewalk, like front street.
No, it's front and then it went down towards the river, um. What street is?
Dock Street.
Yeah, town and country. Where, where was that? It went on dock towards the river. Remember, I don't know, it was you, I remember you. And, and there was, um, and you showed a sidewalk that would go down that way where there would be also additional parking. Do you guys remember that? Is that, was that in the plan?
Yeah, I think, I think we may, you know, that was so longer now. But I think.
Could still have that.
I do remember that at the time of our preliminary application with previous design, we, that was in the context of the city having just commissioned their, the. You know, the famed sidewalk, you know, city sidewalk.
Yes, right.
Which, you know, we were contending with at that point through our plan, trying to coordinate with that.
Right.
Which it was a plan that had been proposed but not yet adopted. So, uh, the, the current status of that is, as we understand is that it's, it's sort of, you know, it's, um, not. Going to proceed in its designed form, um, and so that has. Answered a lot of the questions that were, that were surrounding that application at the time, vis-à-vis that sidewalk improvement project. So we are, um, you know, showing a, a, a crosswalk connection between the two sites.
But you're not showing the, are you showing the sidewalk at all?
Yeah, that, that sidewalk is not. Yeah.
The city's no longer funding that sidewalk extension.
Oh, so when we saw it, you were talking about the city funding, because I got the impression that you guys were going to do that.
Yeah, that was the city.
Okay, so will there be a sidewalk on, on Front Street?
There'll be a portion of the sidewalk that, uh, meets that crosswalk. To the point of complying with the, you know, the. Department of Public Works, you know, requirements for that, but it's not a continuous sidewalk. We have, we have, uh, pedestrian access within the bounds of the site that's accessible and that allows the whole site to be traversed.
We would be nice.
One, one question this time. I can ask, she said I can ask for one, so go ahead. Okay, you know, it, it's just that when I, when you first, when we first came out, you know, it, it provided additional parking. You know, where people could come in, park their car, you know, and I thought it was, um, something that was nice, you know. So we're gonna go with that. To be asked, I mean, what do you think, board? I don't, who went with us?
I think it was myself who, um, so, and it was, I forget, isn't it?
Right.
No, it wasn't very, it was. I forgot.
But just to clarify, you never proposed a sidewalk. That was the city's sidewalk improvement that was proposed. That, that didn't happen because the city didn't have the money to and, um. Just to put that in context, that was the city's proposal. We would love it if there was a sidewalk there, but that's not part of. Our property.
I would say it is a challenging site to develop. It's, it's a, you know, underutilized. Potentially awesome, you know, I mean, and it's, it's a heavy lift financially to like make this site happen, um. So if, uh, uh, we would also love a sidewalk connecting all this together. So if, we would also love a sidewalk connecting all this together on the city's property. You know, adding additional financial obligation and burden to the project. Every step of the way when that comes up is, it's a lot for us. So I just want to voice that, saying for sure, be sweet to that sidewalk. You, you all drew it already in a beautiful way, you know, and.
Community minded, it would have been very nice.
Yes, for sure.
Yes, you know, it's on the table.
Yeah, is there any sustainability component to this?
For sure, yeah. Yeah, so this building is part of NYSERDAS Carbon Neutral Community Economic Development Program. It is carbon neutral, so it's, is all electric, as you asked, all the mechanicals are electric. It's also performing at a measured rate that's about forty percent. Better than code minimum in terms of its energy consumption, air tightness, envelope, that sort of thing. Not in this, there will be solar added to the building to offset energy demands. Still figuring out the details of that. And we, there's. Certain parts of it have water catchment system that didn't really come up in this. We're trying to grab some of the runoff water to use in the gardening practice, that sort of thing. So we're, there's old timbers on the site from the building burned down that we're gonna remill and use in some of the outdoor furniture. We're like really taking a kind of forward progressive approach.
And we're keeping all the kind of embodied carbon that's already on site, on site. So all the demolition of the kind of unreinforced concrete walls that are there that we can't use structurally. But we're using them as fill, we're using them as sort of, you know. Places to fit on the side as much as they can be sort of salvaged. But all the kind of material that's already on site, we're keeping it as opposed to bringing sort of.
And that's going to save much in a sense.
Well, no, honestly, it's, it's like the right thing to do, but it, it doesn't work out to me.
Sorry, quick question, more for Ryan. Is there any way, as we talk about sustainability, I'm thinking about asphalt versus decomposed granite? Decomposed granite is more permeable and goes along with the plan more. Can you appeal?
That's definitely a conversation that the applicant can have with D P W.
Okay.
It really.
It's also accessible.
It's, yeah, sorry, that made more sensible statement for me, I just didn't know if that's.
It really becomes a maintenance and a, not necessarily accessibility. It can be an accessible surface as long as it's maintained. But it's, it's a maintenance and accessibility item in senses will be. So on, on Kate Snaps' property, no issue whatsoever. Within the city right away. It's up to, up to D P W.
It's, it's tough to plow, I think that's what it comes down to. So we'll figure it out.
Well, and you might also, that actually brings up another, you know, with the on-street parking. Presumably that will be, the assumption is that once that's constructed. I guess what's the proposal right now for maintenance of that on-street parking, seasonal maintenance, under the current proposal? With decomposed granite?
So that they would power it?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, no, I just wanted to make sure that the assumption is that that on-street parking would be maintained by the ci, the, the city during.
Yes, that's the assumption.
Okay. So definitely, you know, I would encourage you to make your pitch to have a discussion. You know, have a discussion with D P W and, and if they're okay with it. I think speaking for at least myself, I'm okay with it.
Is there a hydrant, is there a hydrant plant?
There's an existence.
Going back to the parking thing, how many A D A places are you gonna have there? Spaces, you know, out here?
We have one A D A, well, the A D A count is only pertaining to a portion of the site that we're, we're looking at. Yeah, but every, it's, it's A D A compliant in every. Parking facility, so every, you know, area on the site that we're creating is, has an accessible spot. So we created one parking facility on the site, which has one.
Wait, did you say we can designate an A D A and E V? There are two spots on the.
Yeah, and that, so there's a, there's a E V spot and then there, there's a, there will be an E V charging station that is able to, to go to each spot.
But, but only as we, as we.
No, there's two spots. So there's two spots, though, one that's A D A and one that's not A D A. That have a dual charge.
Now, now this is a, a new planning board, but I want to remind John Yu here. When we had a project that we did and then put a sidewalk in, saying it's not something that can't be done. I can't imagine this project without one. I mean, it's gonna be on the corner. And if they don't put a sidewalk in, how is it gonna look outside of their area?
Well, kind of like it looks right now?
Let me just respond to that specifically because the, the, the sidewalk. Will be, there will be a sidewalk installed on either side of the crosswalk. So that you can access safely the crosswalk.
And that's on Front Street?
That is on, on North Front Street, correct. But the sidewalk will, will, that sidewalk will connect to a path that is on the property. And then that property, that, that. Path within the property line will give you access to the building and the entire site.
So this is the drop off zone.
You want to see a sidewalk to be right there?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's concrete.
Yeah, so this, so this is a portion of concrete sidewalk here. Receiving that crosswalk, we have a Roman strip and the, you know, curb cut there. And then that will tie into this decomposed gravel, gravel material.
And then after that, that's it.
Exactly, that will connect to the site. And then we're showing decomposed granite between the current edge of pavement and the property line, so that, that, you know. Which is basically fine gravel. Yeah.
Well, that's why Ryan was saying he needs to check with D P W, because that's not generally accepted.
Yeah, I've never seen the granite as a road, so maybe.
It's currently on Dock Street Extension. So the piece of road that goes from Dock through the Burgery to the train tracks is a D G or.
Okay, so, but that, it's not being used now, but when you build, this is going to be a populated, a more populated area. So you, you know, now, you know, people that go down there, they're going maybe across the time to where you are, but they're now on the side of the street.
Were you asking about the Dock Street Extension?
I think.
Or, or along Front Street? Because Dock Street is, is a, is a dirt road, like a dead end dirt road.
Right, and no one goes there now, more than likely.
Well, and there's no through traffic, right? You can't go anywhere.
I thought there was.
It's Dock Street Extension and Dead End of the.
It's a dead end, but there's a road to go, right?
It's a little horseshoe.
Yeah, horseshoe, yeah.
And to be honest, I'm down there, I go down there and take pictures.
Right, so what do you think about the sidewalk?
The only thing I wish is that it be leveled.
Right, it's, it's.
And it's like, it's like one of these things now, but, you know, I don't think there'd be enough traffic to really.
But not for traffic, really, for parking.
I don't think that would be a place for people to park.
Well, if they're onto this facility.
That's city. So you would.
Away from it.
I think.
They're on a, a way somewhere.
Teresa, I believe, is asking for a long-lived Front Street. The sidewalk, so that people, so that there be curves along Front Street.
Well, I was asking for that extension also, that little piece of land that goes down. Where across from there is the old.
Chats.
That's right. Now, I know nobody goes down there now, but once this facility come, gets up. It can provide extra parking for people that come in, just if they have a nice little area sidewalk they pull in.
I don't think there's enough space there for it to be a parking.
The road is kind of, no, it's a little, it's gonna be a little bit from where their fence is, because they're not gonna take up the whole. They're not, you're not going out to the road. So what we saw, it doesn't go to the road.
No, maybe I'm misunderstanding what you're saying.
See, you would have to take a visit to see what I'm talking about, because I can't.
I know the area very, very well, so. With, you're talking about Front Street here.
Right.
Okay, Regary here, and then the little semi-circular road that goes around.
How far does that go down?
I don't think there's enough space to even think about parking there, to be honest with you.
Does it, it does go down, how far does it go down? That, that, down toward the river? That area.
It goes to the railroad track and circle back.
Okay.
It's grass, hasn't it?
It's grass, it's grass and.
Yeah.
That's the city's problem, right?
Which the city has some resource to work on. And I know that that's, yeah, I'm trying to.
What a guy.
It's all part of the bigger picture.
One, looking at that a little bit more and pulling up Street View here. There are bollards in the middle of the road and then on the side of the road, on, on the Burgery side. So with the parking there, I guess, just making sure in, in one of the, one of the comments, we just admit. It provides some dimensions on the site plan of what your proposed, you know, parking areas are, et cetera. And, you know, we'll just want to look at that and I think with parking along the side there. It may at the very least be something to look at with removing those, a couple of those bollards. Because it looks like it's only about eighteen foot from the existing fence to those bollards. And by the time you have somebody not park well, parallel parking, and it's, it's gonna be tight through there. So there might be a benefit of, you know, at least looking at those, that splitter island where those bollards are. Potentially, you know, some, some additional widening there, just so it's a little bit safer at the very least with vice.
And we are talking about what I'm saying?
On Dock Street.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, the parking that they're proposing on Dock Street.
Yeah. So, thank you for your presentation. When it's. You have a scroll, so we're not gonna answer that.
I, we have a resolution prepared to classify the action unlisted and start sending out some of the agencies. If you're, if the board's ready to take that step tonight.
I'll get that ready for that.
I don't think it's ready to go to county planning until someone, we inform it that Ryan O'Leary's last day has come back.
But can we classify?
It probably would be beneficial with the revisions to the E A F at least, even if that can come in. If you choose to have a resolution to circulate pending resubmission of a revised E A F addressing the. Comments we discussed here. And, you know, as, as long as it's okay with the board, if that comes in as a, you know, a standalone submission. And then the board could circulate if they so choose.
So do you guys agree with that, that we do a resolution pending?
Yeah.
Yes.
You have to make a motion.
Well.
Or you go to draft it then.
I have a resolution drafted, which I have to update a little bit, because it also says that it's a private school. And so I'm just going to say, and the applicant is working with Craig Hague to determine the use.
They're called in once and once.
The, thank you. To determine the use. So. It says now therefore be resolved as the planning board hereby, one, classifies the project as an unlisted action under seeker. Two, declares its intent to serve as lead agency in a coordinated seeker review of the project. And three, directs secretary to send notice that it's intent to serve as lead agency. Once submission of a revised E A F is received. And then I have the interested and involved agencies listed as. The D E C Historic Preservation Office, I put in Columbia County Department of Health. And then it's not technically involved in YouTube, but should I add City D P W just that we can start that?
As an interested agency.
Yeah.
County planning.
Yeah, that's what.
No, I don't think we're ready to go to county planning.
Okay.
But for circulation purposes?
We generally don't circulate to them. But I can throw it in.
I said, do you need a motion for that resolution?
Yes, okay, so can I get a motion for the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, all in favor? All right. So you'll be getting that as soon as, we can, and thank you for the presentation tonight.
Yeah, thank you very much.
And don't be surprised if we call you back. And talk about things. Okay, can we take a break?
Did we have the next step in terms of the public hearing, or is that?
We're not ready, we're not ready.
You got this. You know, certainly let me know if any question.
So, so what, yeah, just in terms of process, when they get circulated, the agencies can send their questions through you.
Well, send them to Teresa.
Right, they're there for it, and then the questions will then come back out.
It, it will go to Ryan, me and.
Right, then we'll, we'll share the, any comments we can keep with you, but you also have a list of comments now from the engineer that needs to be responded to. So the next, you won't be on the agenda again until you're ready, you make another commission.
No, you're not.
I would definitely.
Okay, let me just say, it is seven twenty six.
Occupancy of whether that's what center is gonna be needed, and I guys will look back and will say, we're gonna be at twenty three fifty now. I can reach back and go, hey, you know, is this enough below, maybe twenty four ninety? Yeah, she was like, you know, it's like twenty five hundred.
Okay.
Like, sorry, guys.
It's seven twenty six, I'm gonna take a, a five-minute break to.
Well, so that's not. I know, I know.
Yeah. This is the. Yeah, I can. Yep. Oh, it's so much. Literacy.
Illegal and the whole operation should be stopped, which is just wrong. This is about the Hall Road. And the law was written to accommodate the Hall Road. The CR District includes not just the dock, but includes a tail that's in the district that includes the Hall Road. And the district was specifically written to facilitate development of the Hall Road. Because the comprehensive plan contemplated it for access and egress to the dock. So it's all, it's all built into the code. And so let's go through the comments. TJ did a lot of the hard work on this. There were about a hundred and fifty comments. We spread them out in a conference room. We said this, these stack of comments deals with points two, three, four, et cetera. And we made sure that we covered all of the comments. The first one, of course, were the positive comments from folks who said that it would make the city safer. We summarized that, we attached one of those comments from the bus company operator. We made clear that the Columbia County Planning Board are the ones who said, who have said that this project would divert truck routes and truck traffic from densely populated residential areas where low income, very low income and senior housing exists. We didn't describe it that way. The Columbia County Planning Board has described it as a project that will relieve these neighborhoods. So that's how we summarized that. There's another comment that says that it's not consistent with the comprehensive plan. Several people said that. The courts found that it was consistent with the comprehensive plan. And it is because as we describe it, the plan contemplated the Hall Road and the commercial dock, and it was zoned that way. We attached the court decision as well as attachment six. Believe it or not, that decision was four years ago when we're still here today. That decision held that all of the traffic impacts were looked at with respect to the Hall Road. And that what, everything the town of Greenport did in approving the project and granting site plan approval for the Hall Road was correct and consistent with the code. And that all traffic impacts had been looked at. That's why the second court said that seeker had already been done on the Hall Road. Because the town of Greenport did that. The courts found that the exhaustive work they did at looking at the traffic impacts was complete. So that can't be revisited either. The fourth cluster of comments was just generally that stating that the project would have a negative environmental impact. Again, seeker's already been done and the findings are that it's going to be positive, not negative. But in addition, you know, the neg deck that was issued, negative declaration issued by the town of Greenport goes on and on and on. And we pulled from it on page five of our summary about how not only was seeker done, but after sixteen meetings before that town board, planning board. Every, every element of the project, including wetlands, plants, dust, wildlife, noise, was already looked at and the Columbia County Planning Board and the town of Greenport Planning Board found it to be complete and exhausted. That there would not be a negative impact. In fact, it would be positive as the Columbia County Planning Board said. Another comment said it would, there would be an increase in dust impacts. And that comment included a photograph of a current truck on the gravel road, which is deceptive. That's not what the project is going to look like if approved. That one of the purposes of the paving is to hold down dust. So the whole gravel and the front street, we're going to pave to municipal standards. And the, and, and there'll be less dust, not more. In fact, it'll be mitigated and the, and the photograph that was provided is not, is deceptive and inaccurate. Another comment was that it would increase visual impacts. I don't know what that means, the visual impact of the trucks on a remote Hall Road are not going to be noticed by anyone and the visual impacts of getting them off the streets is positive. There's another comment that generally said that the project will result in public access impacts. Again, we don't know what that means because the traffic impacts were already looked at. And this is not going to decrease public access to any place. Another comment, a series of comments said it was not consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. On page seven, we quote from the comprehensive plan that says that getting the truck traffic off the city streets is something that the city hoped for at the time. By the way, nobody knew when the LWRP and the comprehensive plan was put together, when they hoped to get the truck traffic off the city streets, nobody knew how it was going to be paid for. We're stepping up and funding it in addition to the hoped for idea in the comprehensive plan. But it's consistent with the plan, not inconsistent with it. And by the way, the courts held that too, that it was consistent with the comprehensive plan. The town of Greenport decision and Judge Swax's decision. Another comment, ninth comment, cluster of comments, the project is inconsistent with or does not meet the standards of the city zoning code. Well, this is incorrect too. As I said, the zoning code embraces a two-way Hall Road, says it's a permitted use, subject to a conditional use permit, just like the dock is a conditional use that's permitted in the code. So that, that argument isn't anchored in the law at all. We provide the text of the code. It says encourage compatible uses, which is what is embraced by the code, the mixed use. And it's not disputed that the use of the Hall Road is a use that is different than Basilica Hudson, the Amtrak station in Henry Hudson Park. But that's exactly the purpose of a mixed district. And the court found that there's no adverse impact from the Hall Road on Basilica. Again, there's another series of comments that it's inconsistent with the LWRP. I'm not going to get into that again. All of those issues were covered by the courts and we've already quoted from the LWRP with respect to the aspiration that somehow the Hall Road might be built to defer the traffic. There's an odd comment that it's inconsistent with the Secretary of State's decision on the St. Lawrence Cement Plant. That doesn't make any sense to us. It was a completely different project. It wasn't our project and it involved a cement plant down on the river with a forty-foot smokestack and a two-mile conveyor. I, I, there's no way that you can read a, you know, almost twenty-year-old decision of the Secretary of State relating to a different project as having any impact on this at all. And finally, several people said that the project will negatively impact the city waterfront, which doesn't make any sense to us either because it's going to improve the traffic going through the city and the dock is already there. So it doesn't negatively, negatively impact the waterfront at all. Again, most of these comments were comments that were made, have been made for fifteen years. There were comments that were made when the LWRP and the comprehensive plan was put together, where people didn't want any commercial use on the dock. When the city code was passed consistent with that to allow for the commercial dock and the Hall Road. Comments were made, almost exactly what we're hearing today because the object of many of the comments has now made clear in today's missive outside of the comment period is that they're really trying to put us out of business. This is not about that. This is about the Hall Road. It's not even about the dock. So we have additional questions, but I think it's sort of time we had a meeting like the one that you just had, where we finished this project and talked about what the conditions ought to be on, on this permit. We've offered three. We offered one to dramatically trim back our hours of operation for the commercial dock so that, and you could make that a condition of the permit, that the commercial dock, instead of being seven to seven, seven days a week, would be seven to six, Monday through Thursday, seven to five on Friday, not conducted on weekends and not conducted on major holidays. So in addition to getting the truck traffic off the city streets and onto the Hall Road, we would also not have any trucks down there in the evening on the weekends, in the evening on Friday or on the weekends or major holidays. So we would offer that as a condition and we think that mitigates quite a bit. And we can work with that. It's logistically more difficult, but we've, we've offered it and we'd be willing to accept that. We also said a condition we would accept is that we pave the entire two-lane road and all of the intersections according to the DOT standards of that permit which we've provided to you, we already have. And we would pave the currently unpaid portions of Front Street. And you can make that a condition of the permit. And we also said that you can make it a condition of the permit that the Hall Road must be used by Color Russo for trucks traveling between the commercial dock and the quarry and vice versa at all times, except when public safety demands otherwise. One of them is flooding and it would read, if you choose to accept this language, and I send, I would send it to Victoria. If you do, the two public safety exceptions are when the Hall Road is flooded such that it cannot be used when the, until the waters recede. And the second one would be when the southerly entrance to the quarry is closed due to federal safety laws relating to a blasting event in the quarry. You had asked how long is a blasting event? And we would accept the language that says each blasting event shall be limited to more, no more than one hour. So, and we would provide the code enforcement officer with notice of when that hour is prior to using the city streets. And we wouldn't have to use all of them. We'd have to go around the corner and come through the park and then use the better part of the Hall Road. We wouldn't go all the way through the neighborhoods. We would just curl around the park and use most of the Hall Road during that one hour. So I don't know if there's other conditions you folks have in mind or if you want a working meeting or if you have any questions. But it's time to finish up.
Okay, anybody have questions? Maybe start with your Ben.
Yeah, question more maybe for Ryan is what the.
Ryan has a report. You want Ryan to read it first or Ben?
No.
Okay.
With the flood concerns, what's the extent of the report that we have on the predictions for flooding?
Okay, so the, the, I guess the question being when will, you know, what's going to flood when?
What's the like? Yeah, what, when?
So this area, the, the hundred-year flood elevation, so that having a one percent annual exceedance probability is twelve feet above sea level. So with this, with the hall, with the causeway proposed Hall Road in the dock, we did take a look at what the existing elevations are out there currently. None of those are proposed to change dramatically. So to put this in relation down at the dock on the west side of the, of the railroad tracks, the dock entrance driveway is about eight foot above sea level. And then the dock bulkhead is approximately ten foot above sea level. So both of those would be completely submerged during a hundred-year storm event. Now, looking at the.
The dock would be?
Correct.
Yeah.
During a hundred-year storm event, the base flood elevation that's established by FEMA is twelve feet above sea level. The dock itself is ten feet.
So it's going to be. So just to be clear, if the, if there's that kind of a flood, we wouldn't be using the commercial dock either. And we wouldn't be going through the city streets either.
That is correct. So if we're at a hundred-year flood as modeled by FEMA, the dock's underwater, the causeway is underwater. The dock can't be used at all. There is a circumstance, so the low point of the Hall Road, Hall Road is approximately at the location of the existing culverts that cross under between nine G and Front Street. That elevation is about six feet above sea level. And then at South Front Street and at nine G, it's about eight feet above sea level. So there is a circumstance where from nine G to Front Street could be underwater. So if the water elevation is between six and eight feet, the causeway portion of the Hall Road will, would be submerged, but the dock entrance and the dock bulkhead would not be. However, during that circumstance, the crossing of nine G would not be submerged. So in theory, the Hall Road in this very unique situation could be used to nine G, but could not be used from nine G to South Front Street. Once we get above eight foot for the water level, then nine G is underwater. The dock entrance road is underwater. You can't get to the dock without driving through water. And then once you get to ten foot, the docks, you know, the dock bulkhead is underwater. Does that kind of clarify?
A follow-up, is FEMA's methodology based on historic flood projections or?
That's, so it, it's a FEMA looks at a peak discharge rate, in this case for the Hudson River. So it is based on, I think the flood insurance study for the city of Hudson, it's quite dated from the seventies, eighties perhaps. I can give you the exact date, I can pull it up here in a moment. But it's, it's looking at those peak discharge rates, but it's for a completely synthetic storm event. That's typically a twenty-four-hour event. It's so much rainfall in a twenty-four-hour period. So the reason I point you to that is it's, it's, it's a model, it's hypothetical. So the chances of getting that storm event to occur is, is probably, you know, not going to happen. What we see a lot today is high-intensity rainfall events for a shorter duration. So you can get a hundred-foot storm or a hundred-year storm that is not the FEMA model for seven inches of rain over twenty-four hours. It might be three inches of rain over three hours or something like that. However, that's what they use to base all of their mapping flood hazard area and, and for insurance purposes. But it is a hypothetical storm, it is a, it is a synthetic model.
That's all, thank you.
That's good. So in your report, if, if this, Stevie Goldberg's report first, would you guys like to, him to go over the report that he sent us? Yeah, yeah, okay. This one. If you can read it.
Okay. Yeah, these were just some, some comments following the public hearing that I, I passed along via email. You know, so, so one of those, just coming from the public hearing was regarding blasting times. And Mr. Priveater has provided some additional information there that those are typically one-hour events. And I believe there was discussion at the public hearing about the quantity of blasting events during a year. And I know it's, it's going to vary some, but that was a very, I'm going to say a low number. I don't know if, if there's any additional information that can be provided on, on the quantity, but I think some additional information has been provided by the applicant since that time. If there's further questions, we can of course go into that. There were some questions about the railroad crossing, the Broad Street crossing and, and just during, during public comments. So in terms of usage of that crossing and, and alternatives that were looked into for that crossing, it has come up a number of times over the last seven years. And you know, that's, that is a, an item that is under CSX and DOT's jurisdiction. Any, any potential changes there would be under their jurisdiction. A lot of questions.
Can I jump in there just a little bit? I mean, I, I didn't, I didn't remember that comment during the public meeting, but we had a long discussion of this with the board several years ago. DOT lawyers jumped into a conference call and they said that under section ninety-seven of the railroad law, the commissioner of DOT would have to make a finding of a public necessity for a new crossing. And they don't like to do that because every crossing is dangerous. And they said it was a long shot. But, you know, and they weren't going to have two crossings, one for the public and one for Color Russo. So it was kind of shot down by DOT, I think that's a fair summary.
Correct.
Hey John, we would still be willing to pursue that with the help of the city.
Yeah, we'd be willing to pursue it with the help of the city. Going to DOT and make, seeking a, a finding of public necessity. But that would have to be a public-private partnership that's way beyond the Hall Road.
Something in the future.
Yes.
Some questions, there were some questions brought up about the proposed crossings of nine and nine G and what trip generation volumes were used by, or what were, was provided to DOT in their review. So both of these crossings do have active permits through, through the end of 2024. They've been extended, but there are highway work permits from the DOT for both of those crossings. And those number, or when that permit was issued back in 2019, the maximum daily trip generation was two hundred eighty-four, which is what is, is proposed as part of the application at this time. So those numbers have not that, and, and, you know, just to clarify there, that's a maximum daily trip generation. So that's not looking at an annual average or, or, you know, anything like that. It's looking at a maximum condition on a daily basis.
And that's a two-way trip, two and four.
That's trips.
A hundred and forty-two trips.
A hundred and forty-two trucks. Two hundred eighty-four, so a hundred and forty-two. Hundred and forty-two.
One, one hundred something going.
So two hundred eighty-four crossings for, for the case of these intersections. But those were the numbers that were provided back in 2016. So there's, there's a couple of reports from Creighton Manning in 2016. And those were the maximum daily trip generations looked at at that time. We talked about flooding. Another, another item that has come up in the past, and it definitely would lean into kind of a public-private partnership if, if it were pursued. But the LWRP and some public comments have brought up public use of the causeway from nine G to South Front Street. So it is, it is currently under private ownership. But it is something that was discussed in the LWRP. Of course, if any easements or potential public use of the causeway was considered, there would have to be an acceptor of that easement or, or dedication. And then also a discussion of any liability for public use of the causeway.
Even to, how about for emergency vehicles?
It would all have to be, you know, discussed as, as part of, you know, if that were to be pursued. And those, I think, summarize the, the comments that I, that I had, that I shared with the board at the public hearing.
Can I say, in, in reflection of the numerous comments that we have, could ask that you rethink your exemptions that you have to, to the project. And, and as I looked at that and looked at the LWRP, it seems to me that in the things that you're asking exemptions for, that really makes it, it's just, I, I would ask that you voluntarily reconsider those, those.
Well, let's talk about it now. How do we get around the flooding?
Well, as, as we've discussed, if flooding is that bad, then trucks are not moving, things are not happening anyway. So why would you, so it's A, it's rare, but B, if, if in an act of God, if there's an emergency flooding is happening everywhere, why would you expect that your trucks would, would be on the road?
Because as was just discussed, there might be a scenario where a portion of the Hall Road is flooded, but the commercial dock is not.
True, but the whole idea is that in looking at this, the, the concept is to keep your trucks off the roads, off the streets, period. And these exemptions provide opportunities to go back in and almost, you know, to be on the roads. And it's, it's very hard to track or make that an enforceable thing unless you voluntarily say, I agree that those trucks are not going to be on the road.
Oh, it would be enforceable as a condition of the permit. How? By the code enforcement officer, like every permit is forced.
Right, but, but your path, you know, through, with your proposed paths, I think are, are really are, are, are onerous at best. You know, I, I understand the going around the park and coming up, you know, it's, it's, and again, I get it, but we, we've sparred back and forth about this. And those are business decisions. And if you're saying you're willing to cut back and extend hours, those activities can then be, maybe you, maybe that's not something to ask for. But you could actually then do your activities, let's say vis a vis the explosions. You could then extend your, you could stay, ask for an extension in that day or schedule it so that you can do those activities later in the day so that you don't have an occasion to have to be on the road or be in the streets of.
You know, I, I don't know how often the school that you were just talking about might be closed because of flooding. But here, a one in a hundred, you know, a hundred-year storm event doesn't seem to be something that should shut us down if the road is passable. But it should, should shut us down if the commercial dock is accessible and we're in the middle of a project. We're not going to have any motivation after building this road to exploit the exceptions or pull one over and somebody's, pull the wool over somebody's eyes. We're not going to abuse the exception. You know, an exception for a flood is going to be a rare event as just described. And for the blasting event of one hour, I don't understand why we would have to, why you think we should freeze our business. And even for that one hour, we can't loop through the park and go back on the Hall Road? Why would we?
It's all through respect with the blasting. I mean, I think we're struggling with that one because it's part of your business operation. So why can't you schedule, you know, people's breaks during that hour? Or, you know, put them on lunch or have them do something else? Because it's part of the business operation, you have total control over when the blasting occurs, who's scheduled for shifts when that happens. And so it seems like less of emergency, more like a self-created issue.
So just, if I may, you know, the, the whole purpose of our job was looking at these conditions is we created this Hall Road to as much as possible get trucks off the street. And then think, what is the one percent chance that we may need to use them and then outline those?
But the blasting is not a one percent chance. The blasting is something that.
So for blasting, leaving this one hour is, is finite as we can define it for giving the board an understanding, not even giving you guys an understanding so that you're comfortable with it, but putting it as a condition in the permit so that it can be enforceable by the code enforcement officer. I mean, we're offering these things to be enforceable condition of our permit.
When, when something, I mean, just, just, so I, I, you know this because you represent a lot of developers. Enforcement is not easy. Enforcement is difficult process. It requires someone to make observations, or first it requires complaints, then observations, then notices back to the applicant and then letters. I mean, it, it takes a very long time to go through an enforcement proceeding. And so it's not something that we want to rely on as the mechanism to keep everything. Everything in check. It's there if, if needed, but. It's not. Easy or ideal. It's a drain on the city.
It's in different jurisdictions too.
Yeah.
You know, Greenport is gonna look at it much differently than Hudson. Well, at least the way we proposed it, we would, wouldn't be able to. Go around the park and then onto the haul road.
That's not what I'm worried about.
What do you, what do you bring up?
In this comment. What I'm worried about is the fact that. You have.
How does the Greenport code enforcement officer enforce what happens? On the haul road?
Oh, well, they wouldn't.
They wouldn't.
I know, that's what I'm saying.
No, but the.
You have.
We're saying that.
Why should?
We're saying that we would not be able to use. The blasting event safety exception. Unless. We gave notice to the town, to the city code enforcement officer that we had to. Blast and, and therefore for an hour had to go around the park and then onto the haul. So it would be enforceable by the code enforcement officer. Easy if he didn't get notice of that event or if it went for more than an hour.
And this is once a week, a month? I mean, it's once a month?
It's hard. It's hard to say exactly how often. Sometimes it might be three times a month. Sometimes it might be two times in a week. And sometimes it might, uh, there might not be one for three or four weeks. It's driven by geological.
They can give you more.
This year, we blasted twenty-one times. And we would have shot, shut the road down twice, because we blasted on the west side of the Newman Road.
But, but.
So it would have been nineteen times that we blasted wouldn't affected. The west side of Newman Road.
Okay, but your blasting is also related to. The amount of gravel you're taking to the water foot, right?
Well, it's, no, it's, it's.
Yeah.
It's, it's a, it's a process of the life of a farmer.
But if you increase your truck volume coming from your, because right now you're not working at that capacity.
Right.
Okay, so when that capacity start, when you start.
Oh, no, no, there's no change in capacity based on mine.
No, are you working at that capacity now? Are you? Does one hundred and, yeah, trips coming out of your, um, core in there?
We haven't had, had a peak day of a hundred and forty-two. Trips, two eighty-two round trips in years.
Okay.
Okay.
So we got that point clear.
Yeah.
Now, once you get to that capacity. Your blasting would probably increase. Right now, you're basing it on you not even reaching that capacity.
There's no capacity relationship between blasting and how we service the commercial.
I can't see why it's not.
Well, I think.
Well, because. The dock operation relates to how much gravel you sell.
When they're not, when the trucks are not running.
I'm sorry?
You can blast when the trucks are not running at all.
Right.
Is there any regulations still what time of day that can be or what day of the week?
Yes, regulated between ten AM and five. Five PM.
But, but, I understood you correctly. You said that the road. Last year, your analysis that you would have had the shut, you'd had the, um, use the actual two times.
Two times. This year.
Two times. So really what we're asking for. Is two hours. I mean, it's not a big, it, it's not, it's not. According to that, that's, it's not a big concession to rational.
Same name there, so I don't think that's gonna stay the same.
Matter because I'm saying the concession that we're asking is to not have that exemption. If you're saying that the exemption only adds two hours, all your miles are two, two times.
So what, but.
You said you would have had the shutdown, you know, let's say this was a place you would have had the shutdown for two hours.
Come on, over here, Bob.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
So then that's not really a lot. We're not really asking a lot.
So when.
Not have those trucks on the road.
Yeah. When we shut down the west side of the quarry for, for blasting events. Our customers are gonna go down through Hudson. Right? We're.
You mean not haul road out?
They're not gonna go down, they're not gonna go out Route nine.
Right.
There, we, or how can we stop our customers from leaving our plan?
But right now, we're just talking about your trucks.
Yeah, yeah, okay, but. Our trucks are gonna be minimal compared to the trucks that we sell to different customers. I can't. Stop them at, at the plant and not.
Your customers, we're, right now, we're just talking about your trucks.
But when we blast and we shut that road down, you're gonna see numerous trucks. Go down through the city of Hudson. When they're not using the haul road.
But they're asking for your commitment. I mean, that's.
Our commitment to what? To go to the dock?
They.
No, no.
But, but just go to the dock or to, like, if we haul to our gravel bank?
You would actually, I guess you'd have to cease operations for those two hours.
To the dock.
To the dock.
To the dock. What about if we're hauling to our gravel bank down on, uh, thirty-one?
That doesn't have.
But I'm just saying, both trucks are gonna be taking the same path. And then. Instead of going down the, the, um, causeway.
So that means that with, um.
We're only talking about the use of the causeway.
But you're bringing something else up that we weren't really aware of. So you're saying that, you're saying that. When you blast, when you use the west side to their blasting, those trucks then get diverted. Because they can.
Either they're going south, they're probably gonna go down through around the park.
That's problematic.
How can I stop that? How can I stop it? It's not a problem, it's a good thing because you won't be seeing those trucks that you see now, you will not be seeing those. Ninety, ninety-nine percent of that time.
We approved the road, you're saying?
Yes, yes.
So if you're blasting, you're saying we will see them? And if you're not blasting, you won't see them?
You won't see them. Now, I can't make.
Right, because I understand.
I can't make, you know, F H Stickles concrete truck. You know.
Well, we.
What if he wants to go to Stewart's?
This is all about your trucks.
Well, but our, our trucks are not. Are probably a, uh. Small percentage of the trucks that coming out of.
I agree with you.
Though those trucks will be taken out of the city of Hudson. Ultimately, we can't guarantee that.
Yeah, you're right, you can't.
Okay. But, I mean, obviously. Uh, as an owner of those trucks, he would obviously take the shortcut to go south.
But our intent was that as much as possible, that haul road would service not just you, but your customers, correct?
Yes.
And the service of keeping trucks off the road.
Yes.
But during blasting, he's saying he cannot control his cus, where his customers go while we run.
Right. So you're, you'll, you know, you're gonna see those trucks and we're probably gonna get phone calls. Right? Because sometimes we hire, we hire those trucks.
But that would, but that seems to me that that would occur either way. What, the phenomenon that you're talking about, those trucks going through, would happen either way.
Except that if you, except that when you approve the haul road, there's an added benefit. An added benefit of. Local traffic using a piece of the haul road instead of going around the park. And that's all the local traffic. Of other people buying gravel. It's, it's a secondary benefit. To that part of the city.
Right, but that's right, but, but we're, we're talking primarily, uh, as you were saying, about your trucks.
Yes.
Disagreement pertains to you, your trucks and hours of operations.
Going to the.
Going to the. And the dock.
Right, 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 this discussion.
And he could recommend that for his customers too, to utilize that, but his customers don't have to do that.
Right, right.
That's, that's.
They're likely to because it's easy. It's just that if there's a blast event, there's gonna be that.
Yeah.
They don't wanna go down through the city, that's.
Right.
That's.
But as I see it in this discussion, that exemption. Really doesn't mean a lot. Right? You're asking for an exemption, which from the, from the public policy standpoint. I could, I'm not saying that you would, I'm, you know, I presume that you're good actors. But it could be abused and it could cause a problem. By removing this as a, in your, in your submission, then that eliminates that aspect.
So, uh, uh, removing it, just to be clear, removing which part of the condition? Because we listed.
Well, there's two, there's two. There's one, one's act of God and the other one's going blasting.
Yep.
So.
So flooding.
Flooding and.
Or some other.
Exactly.
Act of God and then blasting. And you're preferring only to blasting?
No, well, because flooding is gonna take care of itself in a sense.
Oh, it doesn't have to.
It doesn't necessarily have to.
Can I ask a question of just clarification or a request from the applicant? So, uh, obviously I went through some elevations here and scenarios. Um, but the, the current flooding contingency route utilizes all city streets from the. Uh, from Newman Road all the way down to the dock. Um. Can the, can, can you and your engineer confirm that there are essentially times that, uh. You would be able to use. The haul road from the quarry to nine G. Then city streets to get down to the dock where we would be minimizing during a flooding event. So during a hundred-year event. You can't use the dock anyways, but during that in-between area where the causeway is flooded. But the dock is not, that you would be able to use the haul road from the quarry to nine G. To minimize usage of the streets, uh, city streets during that contingency, which. You know, uh, I don't know if, I don't know if there's any record information.
But if that occurred, I don't, I think the whole intersection of. Our haul road and nine G.
Well, and, and so that's exactly what I'm asking in terms of, you know, I'm, I'm doing this based on my review of the drawings. But if you have your technical professional look at it and say.
Well, I've seen that for, um, right at the city line, flood.
Yep.
That floods first.
Yeah.
And the causeway is not flooded.
Right. So there could be a low point in nine G.
Right.
Outside of, because we're, it, it's a little bit of a berm on nine G where the old railroad crossing used to be.
Yeah.
I believe. So there could be a portion going south, I think that dips down four. So if you could do that, you know, quick, quick review and analysis to say, you know, we're, we're good, we're above. Ten feet to nine G and then it's from nine G to Front Street. That is the issue because that would just, at least for that one contingency situation that's outside of everybody's control. That you could minimize the use of city streets during that one route and that contingency route could then be, uh, potentially modified. So that would be one clarification that I just request that you're, and you're able to look at to see if that is accurate or if. If it's not going to be and you gotta take, you know. That's the clarification that, you know, I think.
It's about describing different flood events based on the.
Right, and I, and I think really the reason, the reason it comes into play is. With the dock bulkhead being at ten foot. We're at twelve foot, you're not doing any operations there. So once we get to ten foot. You're, and really, once you get to eight foot above sea level, your driveway into the docks flooded, so you're not really doing.
It's gonna be a lot more flooded down there.
Correct, correct.
You might not get a tugboat to sell you up to the bulkhead.
Really what we're talking about is the six to eight foot above sea level situation is the only time that you're gonna be able to use a contingency route. So if we can, that six to eight foot contingency route, if that can be using the haul road to the greatest extent practical. I think that would be a good, you know, good item to kind of clarify and work out and see if that can be modified at all.
In other words, you want them to clarify their exemption. In a sense.
To look into whether that is possible.
Okay.
And eliminate the other exemption.
Right, that sounds good.
And that is from that nine G to front and from the south front to the nine G type of.
Well, it would be today.
That's the low point of the haul road. Not necessarily the low point of nine G, but the low point of the haul road.
And we're asking them to clarify that in their exemption. They just asked for exemption on flooding. So we're saying, okay, if you're gonna say flooding, where, um, clarify that.
And change the contingency.
And I just wanna make sure I get the. And change the contingency route and to eliminate the blasting.
Eliminate the blasting exemption completely.
Exemption, yeah.
As a reason to come on to the streets of.
So in, in, during blasting events. The per, the trucks wouldn't be allowed to run at all.
Is there any, it's too much to get them to change the.
I'm going to say last year was two hours.
Well, we, we just said we would, um, right, but if we wouldn't do it for more than an hour.
Then they're never on the.
No, no, I understand.
Right, no, I understand that, but. In looking at, when we looked at this. You look at, we start with trucks around city streets, now we're creating the haul road and we can move them to the haul road. And then we try to narrow the exemptions as much as possible, but if the haul road doesn't get approved.
Well, no, but this is, but we're saying that's part of your application.
Right, and, but the two hours, you're saying it's just two hours, but I think the benefits of the project, as we've shown, heavily outweigh those two hours.
Right, but they're, they're not usually exclusive. I'm just saying in your, in your. In your submission.
Right.
Just to remove that. And because the submission is for the application for the haul. Right, we, we were willing to cut down the hours. So I think it's gotta be a give and take. For that. I mean, if we went, if we did that. Then I'd ask you to do seven to seven, seven days a week, what the code says.
The giving would be.
You could ask. What the code said.
I wanna ask a question, Ryan, um, in other situations like this out of the town, what are the blasting hours? It's can, is.
So I, I'll be honest, I mean. I. That's a state, state regulation and I do not ask.
It's a state regulation.
I do not have experience with, I mean, that's regulated by the state.
Or regulated, um. I believe it's ten in the morning. Till five at night.
And that's by state.
By the state, it's part of the permit.
They have a mining permit and the city can, towns and cities can't control mining. It's all done by.
Because I was thinking maybe can.
Can I just, can I just? See clarification again with the hours of operation that you're asking in terms of the conditions? So you're asking Monday through Thursday? I just wanna make sure because I, I saw it in written form before, but I just, I heard it verbally.
Sure.
So Monday through Thursday, seven to six. And on Fridays, I thought I heard seven to five, but then I hear no. Seven to five and weekends, not at all, and holidays, not at all, not at all, at, at, either way. And then, okay, okay, so I just wanna make sure.
And major holidays.
Major holidays, yeah, okay.
I guess we'd wanna define what we consider major.
Major holiday.
Better than staying here somewhere.
Better stay, but it was a big day.
How about. And I could just go down and, and I could just go down. Thirty, okay? Isn't that gonna be one of you?
Well, again, if you, if, if you're being genuine about the two hours that happened. Then we're really not really talking about a, a huge compromise at all. So I don't see why you'd come back and ask me to extend the hours.
For you, it's not a duty, but.
You're saying, you're saying two hours, you won't extend potentially. Two hours a week for the whole entire week as opposed to, to the whole entire year. Which would be, I don't know, a hundred something.
We're extending. No, because the code allows us seven.
Right, I'm saying, but, but in exact, if, if from the hours that you had specified that you would operate. You would ask for an additional one hundred hours to compensate for the two hours that you're saying that. You utilized last week, which doesn't seem to be imperative.
We're never gonna blast one hundred. But, but like we said, in those two hours, he can only control Colorado's trucks. So we're trying to wrap our head around is the purpose of. Limiting the, or removing the exemption when it's only gonna hurt Colorado, but it's not gonna protect the city. It's not gonna benefit the neighborhoods that still have trucks going through it. And it's not gonna hurt anybody else who's driving trucks.
Removal of some trucks, at least helps the neighborhood. It helps with enforcement. It, it, right now, you could blast, you could blast every day for as many hours as you want.
Well, no, not as many hours, well.
Yes, between ten. And so.
Every day.
That's not practical.
We don't wanna have a situation. Let's just think, let's say there's some, I, I mean, we see all sorts of worst-case scenarios.
Right, right.
You get in a fight with the city over something, all of a sudden you have a major blasting project and the trucks just start coming through the city streets. Seven days a week from ten to five.
So.
It's, it, it seems like it, it's too easy to get around the haul road.
No.
In, in the case, and that is what the board members are concerned about.
This is what we.
Yeah, it's one hour through the major part of the city, yes.
And, and, and you could see, you're gonna break by the park.
That's all.
Green, seven street, orange street.
So we're all on the same page. During the blasting event, we're still using the haul road, you're just not using the first part of the haul road.
Correct.
The alternative route. So the trucks were all in the blasting event, even if it was limited to an hour. All the trucks would still be on the haul road except for the very beginning part where they go around the park.
Correct, correct.
Just, just to be clear, just wanna make sure we're on the same page.
So I know the alternative is Charlie. So we're saying for two hours in the year as opposed to what it was last year. Well, I mean, that. You would, you would, you would have a lunch break. You would have a lunch break for those two hours.
Right, but that concession only hurts the client. So it's almost like. It's a punish, it's, it's not doing a punishment, but it doesn't, I don't understand how it benefits the city.
If you're not, if you're not, if you're not using your maximum number of vehicles per day anyways. Why can't you just smother them up and down when you're not blasting?
What do you, well, when you, if you hire a truck, right, you come to work at seven o'clock. Right, and you pay him till. They're done. Five o'clock, right, so. You got, I don't know, ten trucks. Five o'clock, right, so you got, I don't know, ten trucks. At X amount of dollars an hour, they're gonna sit there.
When you know you're gonna blast. You can change their schedules that day.
Well, it's 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 between ten and five, it's not like I could blast after everybody goes home.
So if you load the truck and we hired you, all right, and we said to you, all right. You're only gonna work from seven AM to noon time, cause we're gonna blast. Well, you're you're not gonna come to me, you're gonna go to somebody else and say, I want a whole day. I'm not driving ten hours a day straight without stop. I'm not going back and forth.
Not necessarily.
Right, so I'm stopping at some period of time, right? Even if it's my own truck.
Oh, you get a lunch break.
Exactly. Is a lunch break an hour normally?
No.
No, half an hour.
Half an hour. Those guys don't stop, let me tell you.
Yeah.
Cause they, well, seriously, they haul by the ton. They get paid for every ton they bring down, they get haul. So the more tons they bring down there. When they stop for an hour, right, they just lost. Two loads, so whatever that, you know, however that works out, I don't have to get my head.
If they get stopped, they stop, they don't get paid.
Okay, you know, you're just telling me something I didn't understand initially.
No, just I I that that that's my kind of, from 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 my my perspective.
Um, could you give me an overall percentage of those one hundred and forty-two trucks? Belonging to you guys, because just here it looks like you're hiring some and some are your trucks. I thought they were all your trucks.
No, 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 they're all contractors, but it's effective.
Oh, they're all contractors.
No, they're not all.
We say our trucks because they're under our control.
But they're not.
They're under your control, what do you mean by that? Ability control, we hired that. So we tell them what they do and where they go.
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah, just to.
That's not all trucks.
Wait, just to clarify, the hundred and forty-two trucks per day, maximum situation, is only trucks from the quarry.
To the dock.
To the dock, it's not, so it's if their trucks are going to other sites that are land-based or contractors. That's not included because they're not, they're not using the haul road from nine to the dock. But what the applicant has proposed is to allow use from Newman Road to nine uh.
Nine.
Nine. Uh, to go south. Which is not.
If we went north, we would go sixty-six.
Not when there's blasting, that's the only circumstance, no, that they wouldn't be. But right now, that is not, that's an internal road through the quarry.
Right.
That, um, but that's, that's out, the hundred and forty-two trucks is quarry to dock, dock to quarry.
Right, so we we estimated at one time and it was kind of not a tech, you know, it wasn't really. Uh, really technical, but we estimated that probably twelve thousand trucks a year would come out of the city. That went south, that weren't ours. You know, towns that are all south of, you know, the southern city.
As the additional benefit beyond the dock to quarry.
And even though these are your customers and you couldn't legally tell them what to do.
You couldn't make them.
Right. But you could have recommended bounce and recommend.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And they would do it because any truck driver really doesn't wanna go down, park up Green Street and it just. If you can just make a right and go up there, it's, it's just more convenient, it's just, it's logical for them to do that. Now, like Bob said, they're on Lord Stewart's and. Right, that's a different, the city, the city can find other ways to regulate that, those trucks.
So I mean, for for, you know, us to shut down for an hour, I think the city would is benefiting a lot for getting all these other trucks off the road.
No. Well.
Well, I I.
I don't see that.
Well, I I was, I was, I don't, I I, you're saying something I really don't, I don't really follow what you're saying.
We're talking about all the trucks going to the dock.
Yeah.
Right, well. All the other trucks that is not just our trucks that would haul to the dock, need supply. Material to a lot of customers. And they're gonna, they go down through the city, go down around the park, they go down to the gravel bank, they go down to the. Uh bonded concrete stickles, you know, they're they're all over the place, well. Now, I'm gonna say, big portion of those are gonna not go through the city anymore.
How about your trucks?
Just for me.
Why, no, we're not, we're gonna go south.
Right, we go south, we're gonna use our.
On the blasting period, your hundred and forty-two trucks will not.
Hundred and forty-two trucks in a day, not that one hour. We we can't haul down to the dock.
Day.
Yeah.
Which is a big day.
You're gonna see, worst case scenario, you might see seven JR, seven trucks. In that hour that would go to that dock, worst case scenario.
So you, so you have seven trucks looping around. Once, in that hour, you have seven trucks looping around, seven street and going back up. Out Worth Avenue and then making a right and going down the hall.
Right.
For 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 two occasions a year. Well, based on, based on.
It would have been two additions this year.
It would have been, right, right, right. So. It could be, quite frankly, it could be no occasions.
Exactly.
Right.
Or we might, we might not be hauling to the dock that day.
Or twenty.
And it could be more.
In a year, twenty.
Right, and so what, so what we're saying is that, if, what we're saying. Oh, you can, absolutely. Right, but we're saying it's a conditional use of the of the road, you wouldn't, that exemption wouldn't be there. That, those, those, whatever, that the two, the two occasions that it was this year, could that could possibly be twenty or possibly be zero. Because I think that.
So what if it was more?
Well.
From our perspective.
Right, then you'd have to, you'd figure it out, you guys are, you guys been in business a long time, you guys know what you're doing, you can figure out. To make it work. It just.
But this is what we, we wanna make, it's what we're asking.
I understand, there's a monetary component to it. An expense component to it, there's a logistics component to it, I understand.
But we're still asking. Okay, I'm gonna ask, any other board member have questions for um?
Immediately, we can learn better definition, but it seems like a good conversation for a working meeting, would be, would that be us having a dialogue? Between the two, it seems more appropriate for that.
We, sure, so we can, we can definitely schedule another meeting and if you wanna do it on a different night, so we don't have the regular applications to review first.
I wanna give this all proper time to, yeah, to that test.
Of course.
Because remember, this is a new board, but we're reading a lot of stuff and reading is up to the, the person that's reading for interpretation. So you have to, you know, kinda give us time, maybe the extension, but you know, we're working on your project, it's not like we are.
We understand that, we try to be patient about that.
Exactly.
Um, because it's been a number of years, is there anything else? Is there anything else we should be thinking about before the next working meeting?
Well, let's, first off on the record, will you agree to extend the sixty-two day time limit on making a decision? After the closing of public hearing?
Why?
Because we're asking to have a working meeting now, and if you need. The board needs time to make a decision.
And your date is up, wait, next month.
There's no automatic approval anyways, so.
What day, uh, uh, next month, right?
I have.
Well, right, I think this is, yeah, I think this is the twelfth next month, and we just may not be there.
Okay.
So we're asking.
All right.
How much you asking, how much time?
Well, well, let's talk, when do you wanna have a special meeting?
Uh, I should.
You mean a working.
This month.
A workshop.
A workshop, but just on this.
This month.
Right. I would say definitely, I would say definitely before the Christmas holiday, definitely before that. But, you know, I would say af- after Thanksgiving, but before Christmas.
Do you, well, for the next meeting.
There's the week.
Yeah, whenever.
The week of twenty-eighth and the twenty-seventh is. And one of those, so.
I'd be, I'd be fine with that, I can, I can even do an early, early meeting and then.
The week, I, we could all agree on a different time, it's just gonna be. No, you're, you know.
Well, we got the twenty-seven.
I could do, cause I'm 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 off during that time period.
It's twenty-seven to the first, that week.
Think I'm off, I'm off during that time period, it's off to, to the first week of. School schedule.
Yeah.
What school's, I don't know when it's good for me, I don't remember when it was this year.
Well, no, that's not December, that's November.
Most of the, yeah, I'm off, still off, still off for twenty.
Assuming you're paying meetings.
Uh, is it gonna be an evening meeting?
If you need a workshop, you do, make sure the man don't.
That's a question, is, we got a question, is workshop.
I just need the workshop, make sure public.
They're open to the public?
So when we're gonna do this, guys, twenty-seven is any day from the twenty-seventh to the first of July.
Wait a minute, so then I'm not off.
And it's gonna be evening because that's when everybody's waiting. Six o'clock.
So if the evening meeting from the city's perspective, the available dates would be the twenty-ninth, thirtieth, third and first.
Okay, thank you.
What's the, what's the.
Twenty-ninth, thirtieth.
Yeah, wait a minute, what's the twenty-ninth?
Because the twenty-nine is the only time I.
I could do, I usually have standard.
Every day I stand to.
You can.
Can do the twenty-nine.
So the twenty-nine.
I have another meeting.
So is the thirtieth or the first, because then Ryan could be here, can you say?
I think Thursday, that you said.
The thirtieth, thirtieth?
What's the thirtieth?
Other Thursday.
The Thursday?
Yeah.
The Thursday's good.
Let me say.
Uh. Not the best for me, always. Michael knows, I guess, that's something I'd like to go to.
Hi.
Okay, but.
I don't, I mean, if we're gonna do Friday, I would ask it to be like three.
Oh, we need a Friday, it has to be early. I could do three if it's on a Friday.
You know, um, Friday's not a good day for me, that's, that's also, uh, I'm having, uh, the first is not gonna be a good day for me.
What's going on on the twenty-ninth?
Ryan.
Ryan.
A Ryan, so it has to be the thirtieth or the first.
Yes, I'm all done.
And right now, it's looking like the thirtieth, because.
Is there a better time on the thirtieth that would work?
Well, but you, can you do it by um Zoom, can you do it by phone?
I could do, no, cause I I have something that I do at six o'clock, so I mean, if I do the thirtieth, um.
Could you?
I could do it with four, I could do four, be done by.
You could do earlier. Can you do earlier than?
If it's late out there. On the thirtieth, I can do anytime.
Yeah.
So he's good, he's good.
You're good with time.
Anytime on the thirtieth.
Okay, so we can do earlier.
Four or four thirty, let's do four.
So four, just four work for you.
I can, I can do four.
Four works for you, yeah.
Four on the thirtieth?
Thirtieth.
And yeah, as long as I'm done by between six and six thirty, I I can, I can be later.
But it's not the team that you can, you you know, that'll be, you'll have a lot.
Yeah, then I just know I can depart, yeah.
So listen to thirty of the four P M.
Is it, is it, are we doing it Zoom or person?
No, it's a person, yeah.
Here, right.
Here.
Yeah, here.
Four P M eleven thirty, okay. If we need to think about anything else.
No, not eleven thirty.
He means like, no, eleven thirty.
November thirty.
Thirty four P M.
Got it.
And if we need anything, we'll send you an email.
Yes.
Everyone should compile their questions, yeah.
Yeah, um, she's the only thing that I don't remember that's over, so. Oh, here it is. Um, I have a question.
Yes.
And one of your, uh, you sent us a lot of information, still trying to, a lot of it. One thing you did say in, on the end of a paragraph is that, um.
Closed or we still going out?
No, it's not, it's not closed, then.
Prior people are.
Excuse me, I'm asking a question, okay, okay, it said, uh. That. This, what's it called, a truck, a truck diversion project, is that the same thing we talked about?
That's what they call the project, yeah.
Yeah.
Paul, well, we've called it for a long time, the haul road improvement and truck traffic diversion project.
When you, when I kept reading, I'm certainly.
It's one thing, yeah.
Okay, you said that, um, it will deliver environmental justice to the residents of, uh, residents. Of the city of Hudson, who will benefit from the project.
Yes.
And that's because, why?
Because we're getting truck traffic off the city streets.
You're getting a hundred and forty-two trucks off the streets of Hudson.
No more than that, that that's a.
And you're talking.
That's a peak day.
But the only ones we're in, in, we're talking about is the ones that go to your, from your quarry to your dock.
Yes.
So we cannot, right, we cannot take into consideration anything else.
Right.
That's eight hundred a week, eight hundred trucks a week?
So it's, it's a max, it's a max, a max day, so, so.
What's an extreme that's.
But what I'm trying to say is that.
That's correct.
I don't, that's a very small portion of the trucks in Hudson period, in a sense.
Um, let's say on a, on a, on a busy day, if we're hauling south into the dock, I bet you were seventy-five.
If we're not hauling to dock, but we're hauling south.
But you also have several trucks going down in places, not just.
I'm just saying, but we're hauling south, like we were hauling, we 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 did a pavement job.
Yep.
South, every truck went down through the city.
I wanted to know, why do you think that you would be in a benefit with the citizens of the general, if from you? I mean, it's a benefit of not of a magnitude, in my opinion, because it's only your trucks, can't assume anybody, anything else.
Correct.
True.
Okay, I cannot do that and I will not do that.
True.
Yeah.
No.
And, um, you know, the.
What is, what is the ultimate benefit for us?
Yeah.
And one of the ultimate benefits is liability.
For you, yes.
Yeah.
We, I mean, you know, I would ask people that. I was asking the citizens of Hudson, how would they benefit?
Well, there would be eight hundred less trucks in a week.
Yeah, well, that's true, we need to get to trucks. You know, we not, it's not our job to do that, our job is to find out.
Eliminate the trucks.
Judge on whether or not this is going to. Into our future plans.
It's a lot of trucks and particularly during the peak hours and the bus traffic.
Wow, we having two conversations here, can I have just one? Thank you, sir, go ahead.
No, um, I don't know how many total trucks it is per year, cause we don't, we didn't, that isn't how traffic engineers look at it. They look at it as peak, but. Lots and lots of trucks are gonna get off the city streets and it's a benefit to the city, and if you look at the work we did with respect to the peak hours. When school buses are out there and stuff like that, it is a big percentage. Uh, uh, sometimes, sometimes.
The percentage of trucks that are going down Longview Street and is is a lot.
So if, if, uh.
A bit hyper thing.
Just, just to put it in, the twenty twenty Grayton Manning Truck eval, Traffic Evaluation. Did have a chart of total loads per year. Um, in the last full year of data, when the uh assessment was put together. Had approximately, and and I don't know if this is me measuring off the graph or if it's written here.
This is cool.
Yeah, so we're not counting twenty-five, don't worry, I'm gonna, the twenty nineteen total load per year in this report. Um, was, was roughly seventy-five hundred loads, loads being trucks, so seventy-five hundred trucks.
So it would be double that.
That's not, that's not a hundred and forty-two.
Double the trips, well, it's fifty thousand trips. No, seventy-five hundred.
Seventy-five hundred truckloads, so a truckload goes down.
And then he adds one back, so that's fifty thousand, it's fifty thousand trips.
Fifty thousand trips, in in twenty nineteen.
Just going to the dock.
Right.
Just going to the dock, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And, you know, I I mean, it varies here, the last year of of data was, uh, this report was prepared in July twenty twenty. So one, you had COVID and it was July, so that, that does not, uh, that is not a complete year. But the, the most recent year we have a full set of data on is roughly seventy-five hundred trucks in a year. Um, which is. Um, which is, under the current situation, you've got, um, you know, the hundred and forty-two, just by comparison, hundred and forty-two is a maximum. Three hundred sixty-five days a year, is, it's fifty-two thousand, so you can see.
We're not, we're not gonna be home.
Correct, it's a, we're talking about a peak day versus an annual total, completely different, but you can see how different they are.
And you can see how many trucks were getting off the street.
But can you, can you expand, um, when you talked about the jobbers and the other trucks that were related to your industry, what is that number of trucks?
What are you talking about, the visitors?
To the dock, yeah, yeah, over and above your trucks, and I consider our higher trucks to be our trucks in the dock.
Oh, that'll be in there, two hundred and so.
Okay, that's, yeah, that, that includes, really higher, that's not, that's not customer, no, it's not customer truck. Correct, that's not customer truck.
You hear the dog here.
Customer traffic doesn't go to the dock, right, they go, right, they go.
I have one more question, okay, now, you have permission to u- to use the Hall Road or the, uh, bound, right?
Yeah, there's a.
In a town of Greenport.
Right, right, so it's that when it gets to Hudson, yeah.
Now, there's, there's a. Well, as soon as I get to Hudson, which is on the east side of Nine G.
Okay, but I, I thought that you had permission to go one way. You've been at Hudson, you live from Hudson.
On the east side of Nine G.
Uh-huh.
There is no permit to use that, and there's seven hundred feet in the city of Hudson.
Yep, okay, so that's, that was my misunderstanding.
So, so. It is, and it's a lot of people's misunderstanding.
Yeah, I thought you had permission to go one way, I'm like, well, why aren't you?
We can, we can go down and stop at the city line.
Okay, and then carry.
That's it, we don't have, yeah. How did you ever develop that road?
That's why, he just.
Well, I mean, yeah, well, because, because you can't do the toll ride, yeah, yeah, just. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's.
There's no.
Greenport side. Yeah, 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 I tried to ask you. No, that's a big one, that's a major one in the world, yeah, from your, yeah, so in the last mile, so to say, that's really in, in Hudson.
Right, no, but that clears up what I thought.
There are seven hundred feet of.
On the east.
City property on the east side of.
Nine G.
Nine G, right, that is not.
And that is not permitted to use.
Right, that's clears it up, cause I thought they had, yeah, straight wave, I'm like, well, why haven't they used, just to get, you know, those trucks off, but you don't, I can understand that now. Um, any more questions from the board?
No, because we can save them for the next working.
No, if you have any now, just ask please, and we'll have, we'll.
John, can you bring us a big map again?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna have a works, another meeting with, on November thirtieth at, uh, four P M.
Thank you, thank you.
It will be friendship.
We're, we're.
No, that, that, we'll send that over, I would say, David's with the next. No, we're gonna go through it, it's, it's part of our.
Thing, anything you need from me?
No.
Okay, then I'm gonna think of, that's alright.
Don't smile, Ryan, don't smile.
Now, now we're gonna go, uh, please, let, would you give to this, we're going to other business now?
Yeah, it's.
And we're going to go, uh, we wanna hopefully, did we receive the minutes for, um. August, no, Sept- September twelve, September and all, September and October, right, yeah.
September.
We received the minutes for September of October, did everybody get them, or get a chance to review them? Okay, uh, any reports, uh, I think you have something.
Oh, just one edit on September twelfth was, uh, Patina's name is spelled, spelled wrong, so we'll make sure that's changed for the record.
Okay, so. So we need to get that changed, that Patina's name is spelled incorrectly on the minutes?
Yep.
All right, and we thank you for that, I mean, now, those minutes were, they were a lot. Okay, so can I get a motion to approve the minutes for, with the changes? For September and October of twenty-twenty-three?
I'm making a motion.
Okay.
I'll second, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, did everyone receive the bills that we have to pay, that's something that, um, uh, Valerie would be giving to y'all when she's here, but we, I sent you all bills. Did you take a look at them, any objections, any questions? So can I get a motion to approve the bills for payment?
Sure. Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, the final thing on the board is that, um, I wanna explain that there are changes. Years, uh, you, all, all of you are new to this board, and John and I are not, but prior to you coming, um. A lot of application, and correct me if I'm wrong, application to the boards, the, every application came in, came in through the code enforcement officer. Where he at that time determined where did that application go, and he would send it to us with a letter. And the letter was telling us what it is, and all about it, the code is right, and so, that's stuff we never had to do. But that no longer takes place, so the applications now are coming into the board directly. Mm-hmm. So that means, uh, we have to look to see that the application is completed. If, if, if what they're asking for is, um.
Permitted.
Permitted, uh, if the codes are right, and even if the tax map I D is right. Mm-hmm. Because they're giving us this, but we have to verify, right? So these changes are here, and we have to put things in place, we are, um, visiting, um, electronic companies, tech companies, you, you, who wants to talk about that more?
I wasn't able to make the calls.
Well, we, we got a submission from, or supplementary information from one company.
Yeah.
And it is, no, well, the other one, we really didn't get, we were really weren't able to see the, the programs.
The, the other one is our existing service provider for the code enforcement department.
Okay.
So.
Well, I didn't see it, so.
Oh, and we're reschedule to have another meeting, so that you can.
So Michael, you, could you make, uh, just update, um, Ben on what we've done?
Well.
Let, let Michael do it.
Sure, so we had one demo from GovPilot, which is a new vendor that was identified through the initial search, um. Uh, they had reached out individually to set something up, so I went ahead and did that, um, for the board, and then, uh, we have an additional scoping call. Well, scheduled with them for this Friday, um, to figure out exactly which products that the planning board would, would, would use, um, from their product line. And then we're also in conversation with Edmund's GovTech, which is the existing vendor that the city works with, to handle other permitting. Um, it is complete, for now, the city only uses it on the backend, um, but we're looking at their product for a web-based portal. To be able to, for the planning board to accept those and manage them online, so that, the, with that, uh, demo's been rescheduled for the twenty-eighth.
And you're using that right now for zoning?
Um.
On the backend of, of what?
No, I'm just. I'm not sure exactly what the code enfor, what, what, uh, permits code enforcement is using it for right now.
They are using something.
They're using something, and then city clerk is using it for their, for the permits that they have.
Gotcha, okay.
So that's, um, that's our movement into the new millennium, yeah, in the future, and, um, application submissions. Uh, the planning board application will be changed once we get it all together with the tech, cause right now, you know, we have fees that we have to be responsible, uh, responsible. So seeing that applicants are paying, and that is not on the application, uh, Craig did send me a fee schedule, which I thank him for, so, and I, I think I sent it out to everyone. Uh, yeah, I did, have you wanted to, and, um, it shows you the different fees, and we have to understand, you know, what they are, somebody comes for a lot merger, it's a different fee from a site plan, and some that may. Do they pay this two fees when they come for this, two things, you know, these are things we have to, get to know as a board, that we did not have to know before.
I mean, general, generally, these type of issues are handled administratively.
But who's gonna tell them that the, that, the, the applications and everything used to go to Craig, and then Craig would tell them what it costs.
Right, I, I mean, we can have another follow-up conversation, we had, we had discussed, perhaps, other ways to.
Yeah, we, a job that someone was going, you know, that, that the city may be making a full-time position for that.
That longer range conversation, but yeah.
Yeah.
But in the meantime, we have to still, you know, kinda do that.
I mean, is it possible on this web portal to be set up in a way that people can pay?
That's.
Yeah, yeah, that's one of the things, like, so the fees will be there, they'll be able, yeah, that's one.
And then we go to, over the treasurer and to.
Alright, and approval process is something that's gonna change, because right now, when we give a resolution, a lot of times, we have, what are the, um, conditions on it. So we don't like to approve a resolution until those conditions are met.
Well, that's not, that's not, that's not realistic.
Well.
Oh, you mean, you mean, don't sign the plans?
Exactly, right, in other words, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't stamp the plans until the conditions are met on the resolution.
Correct.
Okay, and that's what we've done to kinda control whether or not we're, they're, they're complying to what we're asking them to do, or instructing them to do. So these are controls that are being put in place, so that we are able to, uh, function and regulate what we function, what we do, and also get. The quality of the product that we're asking for, okay? So those are procedures like, so now, what, what, what we are doing now is Victoria meets me here a little early, and anyone that needs a, a stamp after she views it.
And Ryan.
And Ryan, and we have Ryan on board, he also has been diligent, and thank you, Ryan, thank you, for looking at these applications coming in. Fifty-nine, whether south or north, or north.
Right.
Perfect, when it came in, we sent it to Ryan, right?
Cause there was escrow already.
Yeah, there's escrow, right.
Another reason, moving forward, it's helpful to get the escrow at the time the application's in.
Exactly, so that's something else that, you gotta remember that, that that has to be on there too.
Yes.
We have to have a minimum escrow, and we didn't talk about escrow, now, it was suggested that we do an escrow, I call it standardization, it could be scheduled, whatever, call it what you want. Like, in other words, have a standard escrow for certain things, and I was under the, I said, well, you know what, I looked at boards that have it, and I looked at a lot of boards that didn't. And I felt if we put a, a standard to it, say, oh, if you're doing the site plans, it'll cost you this, I think we should just be, you know, be general, like. In other words, we'll have a standard amount of escrow, just to get them on the agenda, and to get Ryan and Victoria. But to say, this is all you're gonna do, or to keep, put ourselves in a box.
Can we, can, I read your letter, but can we do something where we have a range, this is, this is where, where the least amount someone could pay in terms of an escrow fee, and this is. This may be the, the, the highest amount depending on the project?
Well, see, we won't, we won't know, because we are, you know, this, this depends on what is needed to bring this project to approval. So I think we just should, right now, there's nothing that states on the application or the fee schedule of our escrow.
But we can give them estimates.
Right.
But then, is that gonna be paid the actual amount, that, okay, whatever that's, that's actually the amounts that are.
Okay, well, we can just say it's gonna be escrow.
If you set the initial amount based on the size of the project.
Right, right.
So like, that's a brand-new building X number square feet, so new buildings in general have to start at.
A certain one.
A certain amount.
Mm-hmm.
If it's just a restaurant going into an existing structure, that could be a much lower now, and then.
Residential could be even.
So I think you can come up with, with starting points, and then you don't need to keep setting it, it just needs to be replenished when it gets low.
Yeah, and that would be a recommendation I'd make, is when you establish escrow, to set a replenishment amount, so when it drip dips below a certain value. It just automatically, the request goes out for replenishment of so much, and that way, that way you don't run into a situation where you've spent all your escrow. You have additional bills from Victoria and I, and the applicant hasn't deposited anything, which.
And gets mad at us.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so, so these are things I need, you know, we're gonna be back and forth on in the, in the, in the immediate future now, okay? And I was gonna ask for, um, a couple of minutes to develop a little subcommittee, you know, we got the subcommittee with the tech people, so I was thinking that these two would be another subcommittee.
Here for one more month.
John, John, Dan.
I haven't, I haven't worked on you yet.
We really gotta be, I really just fit it, fit it in.
Right, yeah, um, to work on these procedures and changes and stuff, and definitely Ryan and Victoria be part of it.
But if you haven't already, you know, I would say, definitely, you know, feel, reach out to other communities.
Yeah, you have to.
Because, you know, especially communities that might have a planning staff to get their input, because. In my experience, usually municipalities, uh, other city clerks, town clerks are more than happy to help out, um, you know, other municipalities, from sharing that guidance.
So the clerks are involved, okay, you have, see, here, the clerks are not involved in that escrow, other than.
So, some, a place that might have a planning department.
Okay.
Uh, where they have planning staff, no, not a city clerk or, or town clerk, but planning staff, um, or, uh.
Right, right, but planning staff.
Sometimes it falls under the building department, so the building department might have a, um, a staff that looks at that, but, you know, definitely something, because there. You know, I, I'll speak for myself, I see it from the consultant side of it, but not the, you know, I don't manage escrow. So it's best, you know, to take advantage of the people that have that experience, and.
Okay.
Um, and even with softwares and things like that, some, uh, some places nearby that are dealing with similar type of applications.
Right.
They don't wanna talk to a city of Albany, but you also might not wanna talk to, um, a very small town.
So in other words, if you have a place that has similar di- demographics and similar, uh, makeup like we do, you may wanna check a similar township. Or municipality and say, hey, what is your, what is your policy, do you have a procedure that you follow in terms of, uh, how do you set escrow? So that we can get an idea, maybe two or three other places, and then from there, have them as a sounding board, I mean, even in academic, you know, settings and educational settings, when we're looking at doing a policy or. Or a program, we get an idea, and we call around to arriving different, uh, uh, schools, situations that have similar demographics, and to try to find out. You know, how did you pull off this particular program or whatever, what is this like, and we, we take from that and pull from that and get ideas from that.
So can I get your commitment to be on this?
With additional support, they could just take it, people has a phone call or a letter, and it's like, it would take that much effort.
Yeah. Yeah, but I need, I need to get, I need to get the planning board members involved, so.
I don't have a problem as long as I have some help, I cannot do it by myself, I don't have that time.
Uh, John, John got me for a month.
I need more than a month first, and I, I need somebody.
I mean, he could start, and then by, by next month, but, you know, we can get some, when I was.
Did you email Valerie to see if she wants to be on it?
Well, right now, she's gonna be doing the finance.
Oh, okay.
She's agreed to that, then we're not, we're not going to, to, um, we're not going to be counting or anything, it's just that when the bills come in. You'd see I'd be typing and sending, I'm the one, and she's, they're gonna come in, and she's gonna be the one sending them to you, and seeing that they're recorded properly, and, you know, is it a problem with it, she'll be the, uh, go between. Okay, so can I get a committee, uh, for at least some? I mean, it's only six of us, and then seven of us, maybe you could, um, you know.
John and I live within walking distance anyways, so we look down.
All the while, okay?
Yeah.
And, you know, I'm always the other person, but, you know. Okay, and being, need me to do this, tell me, but instead of me trying to think of what to do, you tell me, two reasons, I need somebody, I need you to call these people, huh, okay? Is that fine? Can I get that commitment? Thank you, please.
We're doing it.
I didn't, I didn't hear his commitment.
It's a commitment, because I need the, the, I, and we had this project before with Jean, but Jean left, and before, and he left.
Jean is online.
Oh, and we, and I. I had to, I had to, uh, we had to pay to just get his, his emails from the archive, you know? So I can send you all of that, and just get started, I'm not gonna let it go, cause we wanna get this done as soon and ready for when we start the, um. The application, the new application.
What is, what is the timetable, give me the timetable, so I can, I can integrate it into my planning schedule.
Well, you can start now, and I'll be keeping you, cause this has to be before we, um, get, get it computerized.
I need to be.
Okay, now, can I get a motion to adjourn?
You may.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.
Wait, what time did you buy, what time did you take that break over there?
Around seven twenty-something, so.
Thank you.